Meeting is called to order. I need to do one technical check. Check, we have a couple of council people participating virtually. Councilman Lambert, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can hear you.
Okay, we can't see you. Can you put your camera on? Or you don't have to, I guess, at the moment. It's gonna be better, cuz if I, if you need to ask questions or anything. And Councilman Henigan, you can hear me?
I can indeed.
Okay, Councilman Henigan, if you could lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, please.
Please rise if you are able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliver it. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Amen.
Sarv, do you wanna join me up here, please? Okay. We are so excited you're here. And often I don't use notes for this, but because we're honoring you, our total spelling bee champion, but also our vocabulary champion and our word origin champion. Um, I have to have notes cuz, you know, big words. So, tonight, Sarv, we recognize you for being prodigous?
Yeah.
Just, just in case, I'm gonna pretend, I'm gonna channel my inner spelling bee judge. Okay, so the origin of prodigious is Latin. Prod- prod- prodig- I had it earlier, I practiced. Prodigous, meaning marvelous. Because Sarv is marvelous. And the definition is remarkably or impressively great in extent, size, or degree. And you certainly, as such a young student, are remarkable and impressive. You have demonstrated perseverance, which is also from Latin, and it's really from perseverance, um, meaning to persist. And you have continued effort to do or achieve something despite challenges, right? Because you did it two years ago, and then this year you finished third as a rising sixth grade, correct? And of course, you are lexicologically gifted, which is from Greek and Latin. Lexus and donum, which is exception, as though y'all don't know this already, is exceptionally talented in the knowledge and use of words. We are incredibly impressed by how far you've come. Not just for your speaking skills, but for your focus, dedication, and humility. You've represented Dunwoody exceptionally on a national stage. Your achievement is truly commendable. And commendable is from the Lat- from Latin. Commanda re, meaning to entrust or to praise, and you deserve praise and recognition. And I don't know how many of you had the pleasure of watching Sarv at the spelling bee. Um, if you did, you saw how incredibly composed and mature you were, and how much you charmed not just those of us who know you and support you because you're from Dunwoody, but the audience and the judges. And there's a clip on my Facebook page where you can see when you, um, when you came back, when someone missed a word towards the end, um, and you said, well, this isn't a surprise. Do you remember saying that?
Yeah, yes.
It was very, very charming and cute, and you were fantastic, and we are so proud of you. Um, and you definitely have shown this community how excellent you are. And so we have this felt, this certificate for you. How do you spell amazing?
A M A C I N G.
Right, that's. Uh, and so congratulations from the city of Dunwoody for your exuberant, because you can find it probably like on YouTube or something, right? The spelling bee somewhere, and you should find him because he is totally exuberant when he's spelling. And prodigious, which we already said, third place finish at the 2025 Scripps National Spelling Bee. And remind us, how old were you when you did this?
The first year I was ten, and this year I was eleven.
And how old can you be and still be in the spelling bee?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, yeah. So Sarv came in third place out of two hundred?
I think it's forty-four.
Two hundred and forty-four spellers. And from all over the country and a little bit around the world, right? Um, and he did a fantastic job and made our community so proud. So congratulations, Sarv.
Thank you.
So counsel, just for awareness for y'all and the people watching and the people that are here. Um, number one, we have to reschedule for another time. All right, next is, there's not a presenter on the agenda for number, the audit? Is it Richard? Oh, public comments, I'm sorry. Sorry, I skipped. Figured Sarv didn't have to sit through all this. Okay, now, um, I have a lot of cards, and we have thirty minutes. I want to remind everyone that for the comprehensive plan, this is a public hearing. There is a time limit for that as well, so I encourage, if I call your name and you'd like to speak, uh, come right up. I also encourage you, if I call your name and you've, everything you wanted to say has been said, to go ahead and just wave, stand up, or come up and say that, because we have thirty minutes for public comment. And, uh, it looks like we might actually hit that today. Um, and then for the public hearing on the comprehensive plan, we will have a public comment there as well. Um, Gary, I'm gonna call it a couple of names, just so people are ready. Gary Sonier. Senye, I almost did that. As you can see from my presentation, pronunciation is not my expertise. Dan Weber, you'll be next. And then Max Lehman, you'll be after that. Just approach, introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes, sir, and there's a clock. Is the clock ready? Yes, okay. All right, uh, if you'll speak into the microphone, please, it may need to be adjusted. Thank you.
Gary Sonier, I live in Dunwoody Station. Uh, been here about twenty-five years. I just wanted to make a brief comment about the comprehensive plan. My neighborhood, we're very concerned about the implications of too much density in this northern part of the Dunwoody. One of the priorities stated in the plan is to maintain our neighborhoods, which now is the number one priority. And I would posit that if we allow high-density development in these areas of the neighborhoods, uh, we are not gonna be meeting that objective of maintaining in the neighborhood. And in particular, on page one oh three, where they have a zoning map, I would like to see, and, um, my neighborhood would like to see that that area in Ashford around the Life South property is currently listed as appropriate with consideration for multi-unit dwellings. I would posit that that needs to be inappropriate, or otherwise it's incompatible with the objective of maintaining the adjacent neighborhoods. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dan Weber. Or would you rather wait till the? Okay. Sorry. Okay. Max Lehman. Okay, he said he agreed with the first speaker and he yields his time. Oh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hickey, you'll approach the microphone, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight. I'm not going to be speaking on the comprehensive plan. I've, uh, I've been a citizen of Dunwoody for thirty years. This is my multiple times to comment on about the same matter, which is the year-end audited financial statements. Very good to see them six months and twenty-eight days after year-end. If you were a public company, you'd all be fired, okay? But it's, the delay is inexcusable. It's even worse that the financial audit data is different than the year-end data that's presented by the, by the, on the website. The Malden and Jenkins data is very helpful and very useful. I see you have some of the supplemental audit report stuff in there this year. It's very helpful. You might just keep that in mind on future bond issues. That may have gotten over the finish line if you hadn't been so adamant about not having the bond expenditures audited. Same thing it was in this year. I have a couple, three questions for the Malden and Jenkins representative. Is there any written memo or letter or other informal suggestions for improvement that was submitted to city staff or management? It's a very common practice for the external CPAs to permit to do such a matter. Why was the audit adjustment that's listed in the data not recorded? If you found it, why didn't you record it? Why are there various substantial differences in the city financial statement that's on the website and the audited financial state, statements? Such as, the city financial data on the website, the fund balance in the general fund is two million ninety-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. Okay? It, that's the increase in the fund balance. The increase in the fund balance from the audit is much, much different. It's two hundred and seventy-five thousand and ninety-two dollars. I'd like to know if Malden and Jenkins read the, the financial data from the city that's on the website, and why is there such a big difference? Now to my real issue, six-month delay in the audited financial stat, statements. And the mayor and every other body, everybody else has been touting how great things are in the last twenty or thirty days. How we have a three-point-five-million-dollar increase in the city's reserves. Well, according to the audit, there was only a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand increase in fund balance. How in the hell did you go from two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand to three-point-five-million increase in the city's reserves? And why did we only realize that six months after year-end? What if it'd been a negative amount? What if it'd been a deficit? What would you have done? Six months after the fact that you're only finding out that you have a very questionable, okay, increase in reserves? So, why is all this stuff done?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Uh, Dave Cohen. And then Juan Lago will be next, after Dave.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and, uh, councillors. I'm here tonight because of the, uh, size of the proposed project and the effect it might have or will have on traffic flow. I've been here thirty-one years in Dunwoody. I love this community. It's a great place to live. However, Ashford Center Parkway, which is the street right up the street from us here, flows into Womack, and it's one of only two east-west streets that cross Dunwoody. This one only goes about halfway across Dunwoody. Mount Vernon goes completely east and west. It crosses Ashford's, Ashford Dunwoody Road, then Shambly Dunwoody Road, where traffic is bumper-to-bumper during rush hours. In the morning, Womack is bumper-to-bumper. And late at night, it's actually a speedway because police are not out there, uh, checking on drivers doing excessive speeding. So I'm concerned that this street, which services, if you go from Tilly Mill this way, Georgia State College, Berman Commons, then you have the library, then you have the Ashworth Community, the Ashford Dunwoody condominiums. You have the Brighton Gardens. You have a lot of, and the Jefferson Apartments. A lot of tremendous traffic volume already. And to add two-hundred-and-twenty potential cars at this development is serious. Plus, there are blind curves right in front of the entrance and exits right now to the Life South Blood property. I don't know what the plan holds in terms of egress and access and exit for this, uh, new, new property. So I wanna alert everybody to the fact that it's already a very crowded thoroughfare that only crosses half of Dunwoody, and it could become a lot worse. Plus, this project has an underground parking garage as part of it. And underground garages sometimes are difficult for seniors to navigate, and especially people who have to walk from an elevator, maybe with a walker, maybe with a cane, to get to their cars. So I think this project, in its concept, is wonderful, but it's greatly oversized. If it was maybe like Brighton Commons, ninety-five units, we could live with it, but I think six stories high, double the height of the cube storage facility and just about every building adjacent to it, it's, it's serious, and it's big, and it's definitely going to contribute to more traffic on, uh,
Thank you.
the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lago. Uh, approach the microphone. Uh, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. I'm a resident of Dunwoody Commons down the road over here, and, uh, I wanna basically reaffirm what the first gentleman said about the projects that are oncoming. My question is primarily the purpose of the comprehensive plan. This one is very similar to the one from twenty twenty, twenty forty, uh, in terms of zoning and all that. Uh, I agree that the Ashford area here should basically be protected as opposed to destroyed. The question I have is how much can we trust our city council to basically protect our neighborhoods as opposed to change it willy-nilly? The plan seems to say one thing, and then we're dealing with problems that are changing the whole plan. And one of the things that really came out, and what we're a little bit late to, is, I did not realize that Dunwoody only requires that the applicant give notice within five-hundred, uh, yards, I believe, of the perimeter of the property. Well, we're slightly beyond that. So the people that are gonna be affected by the Life South, for example, uh, are the two residential neighborhoods at the other end. Yet the notices went to Valley View, which I'm okay with. And it went to Manjoe Road, which exits and ingresses from Ashamley Dunwoody Road. And it went to Dunwoody Station, actually only the side of Malpo's Road, which ingresses and egresses on Mount Vernon Road. So why were we kept in the dark? Uh, I guess I met code. Is code sufficient? Do you need a longer distance? Do you need to basically reach out to the affected areas as opposed to a geographical circle around the property? And that's basically my comment. It's, again, can we trust you guys to uphold what you say you're gonna do? Assuming we all like the plan and it's approved. And can we get better notice of what's going on in the neighborhoods so that we have time to react? Uh, by the time we, we learned of this, it was pretty late in the game in the planning commission, and they just sort of rubber-stamped it and sent it forward to you guys. Uh, and probably see me later. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Wendy Taylor, then Tom Taylor, and then Scott Richmond. If, if you're choosing to speak, that's fine. Uh, go ahead, Wendy, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, wait. Did you wanna say something? All right. And Wendy Taylor, and Dunwoody resident. The hundred-and-sixty-six-page comprehensive plan is impressive. It's obvious that the Dunwoody staff put in countless hours on it. I've put in many hours myself, digesting its contents and evaluating its potential impacts on my Dunwoody neighbors and those who drive in and around Dunwoody. Although the comprehensive plan is nicely polished, there's ample evidence that developers assisted with the polishing. This comprehensive plan allows for ten-story apartment buildings to be built overlooking single-family homes in Dunwoody North neighborhoods. Dunwoody staff told us at the June Planning Commission meeting that developers said the project wouldn't be worth doing unless ten stories were allowed. Did staff not realize that the develop, developers want all buildings to fit more rental income units on properties to maximize their profits? What does this do for the surrounding neighborhoods in the shadows of these towers? The list is long and not at all good. Overcrowded schools, plummeting home values are two outcomes I can think of. All, after all the public input collected for this plan, why has city staff deferred to developers' suggestions? I've studied the conceptual design for the intersection of Peeler Road and Winter's Chapel Road in front of Walmart. It doesn't take long to, it doesn't take a logistics engineer, which I am, to see what any driver familiar with this intersection knows. Removing a lane on Winter's Chapel and turning the gentle merge into Pe- onto Peeler into a tight ninety-degree turn is nonsensical. The hired engineering company is not at fault for this design. They were tasked with making room for a concrete trail wider than an interstate lane in front of Autozone, a Landomac gas station, and other businesses along the road. And per the comprehensive plan, to leave room to install public art in that intersection. Anybody ready for some more Dunwoody phallic symbols? Approval of this comprehensive plan will give city staff permission to allow developers to build what is most profitable for them. Dunwoody residents will be stuck with walkability and connectivity designs that will mean far fewer shade trees and far more impervious surfaces in Dunwoody, not enhancing Dunwoody's character at all. Traffic backups in longer time, travel times, especially where high-density housing is added and streets are narrowed. Reduced air quality from idling vehicles and fewer trees. Overburdened water, sewer, stormwater, and road infrastructure that will fail, leading to inconveniences, health hazards, and expensive repairs.
Thank you. Uh, Tom Taylor. Or if. Okay, good job. Uh, Scott Richmond.
What he, can I finish my, um?
No, because he can come finish yours.
All right, you get to read. Start with five.
There you go. That's a great compromise.
And, and. This page.
All right, and you have three minutes.
Sixty-nine miles of multi-use trails planned for Dunwoody, hundreds of unoboyable pass sections, the vehicles we're crossing thousands of them daily. The occasional cyclist will surprise motorists. These were, you know, are death wish to people who wanna cycle, which most don't use the paths. While pretty on paper, the best engineer cannot overcome the problems that we created by these many initiatives allowed by this plan to be implemented. I suggest we start by removing this plan, blanket permissions, give city staff two. One, make any changes to zoning. Two, approve any project concepts or final designs. Three, make any promises, and this is a big one, make any promises to contractors or developers. City staff has proven they are much too influenced by developers. Mayor Deutsch and city council members, please recognize that the unelected staff have usurped your power and representation of those who call Dunwoody home. Do not approve the plan as is. It can wait. Let it go right to your constituents before sending it to the ERC and DCA. This can wait. As a homeowner voter, I expect, I speak for my Dunwoody neighbors. Um, I'm not for reviving this plan. Thank you very much. Tom Taylor, seven-two-six-four.
Thank you. Uh, Scott Richmond. And then Hillary Schaefer.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Scott Richmond. I'm also a Dunwoody resident about, oh, just almost six years now. I just wanted to talk real quick on the, uh, the solar discussion from the Sustainability Committee and kind of take an opposite approach of, uh, others here and tell you that I'm a big cheerleader for this. Uh, we've seen it going on, um, around, uh, with our neighboring communities, um, Tucker, Roswell, and others throughout the state. And I think it would be a great initiative for the city of Dunwoody to pursue, um, particularly on our, starting with our, um, our public buildings. And, um, also, the savings that's involved with this would be a great way to not give it back to the taxpayers, but to reinvest it into the community, for whatever purposes it might be best suited for. And that is all. Scott Richmond, Dunwoody.
Thank you. Hillary, I can't quite read this, Schuffler, Schaefer. Okay, so Hillary agreed with Scott. Uh, Mayor Shortall, and then Ali. Okay. That's fine, gotcha. Ali. Approach the microphone, and you'll have, uh, three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, city council. So I was gonna talk about two distinct items today. Uh, the first one is, according to the agenda, I think there are two items that this council will be reviewing or voting on. One of them is for some lighting system above the building, and another one was some plans for Christmas. Both ideas look fantastic. However, the price tags do not. Um, so when you look at the price tags, maybe that is a very competitive price tag for what the actual scope of the operation or product is, but it just kind of seems like a little too much money for the ultimate output, so I politely asked them, when you do your deliberations on that, you talk about that, maybe you wind out a little bit more on that price tag. Um, again, the one with the building was really the one that was concerning, but, um, again, the ideas are great. The second I, the second item I was gonna speak to you about is a couple of weeks ago, I believe I spoke about some of the restaurant businesses here in Dunwoody and how we can promote them. Just the other day, I was able to finally try the Stone Age one that just opened up. It was fantastic, another great Dunwoody restaurant. Fantastic. Um, but one of the concerns I had was that we're starting to get so many restaurants that we really need to try to advertise globally for them so that we can get a lot more of the Buckhead business, West Smithtown business, other areas, so that other people will come in and dine here, so we can help those businesses stay afloat. One thing, uh, I guess an example real quick is, over the weekend, as you guys know, I'm a soccer referee. Well, one thing I'm not sure if I told you is, I'm actually a referee instructor as well, so I like to make the joke, those, those who can't do, teach, right? But anyways, we were in an instructing class over Saturday, and one of the things they wanted to emphasize is a little bit of, of our target audience, like the, the youth soccer referees. What can we do to really get to them, kind of encourage them, but also get our message correctly? And they were talking a lot about how things have kind of changed, training has changed, and they were actually gonna use Instagram slash TikTok videos more to maybe get some of the rule changes, law updates, just a better way of communicating to that, and, and that's kind of what they were looking at. So I kind of tried to apply the same principles to some of the stuff we're doing in, in government, right? So unfortunately, government is one of the slower to adapt. I think we could all maybe smile and laugh about that. I can, I can only wonder how many computers are, are still running Windows ninety-eight, right? Um, but overall, uh, I think that might be the next frontier that we consider. Um, in order to help these businesses out here, maybe if there's a global advertisement, or maybe we could look at putting some money towards maybe actually grabbing like a, a link, a group of influencers rather on Instagram, TikTok, whatever these social media channels are. maybe actually grabbing like a link, a group of influencers rather on Instagram, TikTok, whatever these social media channels are. They would be maybe the best use of some money to be able to get more or attention. Get more people to come to Dunwoody to maybe dine, wine, buy some stuff. Um, I'm going, last week I went to a nice restaurant in West Midtown. And I got the idea from TikTok. We went there, we spent a couple of hundred dollars, actually. It was pretty good. Tomorrow, we're going to another Thai restaurant. Um, same thing, got the idea from TikTok. So it might be an idea that we need to approach. Um, things evolve, uh, so same with advertisement as well. I'm not an advertisement expert. Definitely not a social media expert as well or an influencer, but I think it's something we need to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that? Do we, how much time do we have? We should have time. And it's okay. Uh, Bradley. Um, and I'm not gonna get this. And then uh, Mary D. Shortle, you'll be next.
Yeah, Bradley Hanzjuk.
There you go.
I just saw that the solar item was on the agenda and I'm also in support of the city adopting uh, solar panels and just adopting renewable energy on city property. And I guess also I'm in support of increased densification of Dunwoody and and uh, having like more bikeability and I agree with a lot of the the stuff about the roads being really fast around here makes uh, biking pretty difficult a lot of the time. Uh, so I don't know. Be nice to consider that in the plans. Yeah. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Mary, you'll have three minutes when you get to the microphone.
Go, Mary Shortle, twenty-eleven Woodland Way. Resident of over thirty-two years. Uh, I have an idea for the Life South Building for the future of it that perhaps hasn't been brought up yet. How about a pocket park in the space instead of a high-rise that would add density to an already packed Ashford Dunwoody Road? There is a definite need for green space. And if you look closely, you see the Jefferson Apartments uh, with a multitude of kids in those apartments, no place to play but asphalt parking lot. And if you've ever been on the street and when the school buses come, there's at least seven of them that unload all these kids and there's no place to play. So you say, okay, how are we gonna pay for this? Well, how about giving naming rights to an individual or an organization? It can be a multitude of people that's that can purchase this. Um, Dunwoody Garden Club would be more than happy to maintain it and beautify it. Um, I just ask you to quit being so generous in the rezoning department. We are not Santa Claus. Keep keep the ideas of the founders of the city two thousand and eight in the back of your mind and give us more green space. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so to back on, uh, now we are on the present. Uh, that was the end of the cards I have, along with the public comment section related to the comprehensive plan. Later this meeting, there will be a public comment section at the end of the meeting, should anyone want uh, have anything to say. Um, Councilwoman Harris, can you hear us? I see that you're online now. Okay, well, let us know.
Yeah, yes, I can. I can hear you.
Alright, thank you. Alright. So now we have the presentation of the audit results. Richard Plato.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Josh Carroll from Morden Jenkins is here tonight. They're the external audit firm. And he is going to go through a brief presentation of the twenty-twenty-four uh, fiscal year audit. And I'll get Josh up here now.
Thank you, Richard and Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. As Richard said, I'm Josh Carroll. I'm a partner with Maldona Jenkins. We perform the city's external audit. And I'm gonna go over the results of the December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four audit. Um, this slide, this little snapshot of Maldona Jenkins, we've been around over a hundred years now. We spend a lot of time and energy investing in state and local government audits. I spent my entire year doing nothing but counties and cities and state agencies and development authorities in Georgia and across the southeast. I don't do any tax work. Um, everyone that worked on the city's audit is in the same position. So we spend a lot of time and energy investing in state and local governments. It's about thirty percent of our firm's overall practice annually. Um, the statements are the responsibility of the city's management. Our objective as your external auditors to express an opinion. We followed all the generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards, and we did issue an unmodified or a clean opinion, which is what you'd hope to get from your annual audit. So as far as we're concerned, the statements at December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four are materially correct. We also wish a report on compliance and control. We come in and we kind of just look at all your accounting cycles, um, how you receive cash, how you disperse cash. How you enter into contracts with vendors, um, how you onboard an employee and terminate an employee, um, and you have a clean opinion there as well. We also looked at your federal grant programs. Um, you spent money on highway planning and construction this year. Those are generally road and bridge projects. And we looked at the grant agreements and the federal compliance supplement, um, what you spent the money on, how you spend it, all the reporting requirements, um, and you have a clean opinion there as well. And you know, big federal grants are not the norm for the city. Um, they kind of were through the COVID years, but these are kind of one-off grants, so they're not a normal everyday thing that we deal with. So it's kind of good to see the city's staff is is managing those well. Um, this slide, if I was on council, I'd want to know, do we have anything unusual or aggressive in our financial statements that might kind of sway them one way or the other? Um, you really don't. Your notes are disclosed in the financial statements. They're very similar to many of your neighbors and other municipalities in Georgia. Um, and your only estimates are really your useful life of capital assets, which is how long do we think this building is gonna last and we depreciate it over those years? How long does a police vehicle last some? So there's nothing really overly concerning there. We did implement two new Gatsby's this year, Gatsby one hundred and one oh one. They did not have a very significant impact on the city's financial statements, but we did implement those. Uh, we have a good relationship with management. We come in, we ask for a lot of information. It definitely takes two sides of the coin to get an audit done. It's not just the audit. Um, we bug Richard and his team and all departments, um. Everything we ask for, we get. Nothing seems hidden or covered up. So we appreciate the city partnering with us to get the audit done every year. Uh, we didn't have any audit adjustments, meaning we get the trial balance, we kind of audited, we do our thing, we didn't find any material differences. Um, so we didn't have any audit adjustments. So Richard and his team do a great job. Um, certainly not the norm in local government. We did have one adjustment that we didn't post. It was not a material amount, so management chose not to post that. That is included um, in the adjustments that we provided to council. Um, and we are independent. We don't close the books. We don't reconcile bank accounts. We don't post journal entries. We don't do any bookkeeping work. Um, we just come in and do the audit. We don't close the books and then turn around and audit our own work. So we are independent. Um, this is the one financial trend slide I have. It's your general fund, your main operating fund of the city. Shows your unassigned fund balance, which is fund balance that's free to the city to do anything they want with. It's not restricted by any outside parties or anything council might have kind of earmarked for capital projects or other uses. This is just free flowing cash. We can do anything we want with. Um, and the G F O A is the standard setting body for local government. They recommend a minimum of two to three months. Which is sixteen to twenty-five percent. So we're at eighty percent, which is a little over ten months. So you have a very healthy fund balance. Your general fund also has way more fund balance than this. It is just kind of been set aside by council to do other things, but this is just your free flowing, you know, fund balance. Um, and the big upticks, the hundred and twenty-six and hundred and twenty-nine percent, those were kind of COVID years. We got a lot of COVID money and we were able to spend it on some of our operating and capital costs and that money is, you know, not there anymore. So each year, twenty-twenty was CARES and twenty-twenty-two was ARPA and we kind of trended back down to kind of a more normal level when we started re-incurring those payroll and capital expenditures. Um, but overall, you have a really healthy fund balance. Um, and we are a free, a full-service E P A firm. We have a government advisory service group. Um, they're not CPAs. Um, and they work specifically on local governments. They kind of fall in these four little buckets here. Um, they do a lot of niche projects with cities and counties and development authorities. Um, the big one they do is operational assessments. They kind of come in and look at maybe one department or maybe a citywide project. How are we operating? Why are we doing what we're doing? And how are we ultimately aligning with our own comprehensive plan or our internal policies, maybe best practices and ultimately, how are we delivering services to the citizens of Dunwoody? Um, so if that's something council ever be interested in hearing more about, I'd be happy to, you know, connect you with the partner that heads that up. Um, and we also have I T and cybersecurity and this is kind of, we do offer it. We kind of do a gap analysis of what information do we have? And how might that be exposed? What are we doing to, you know, make sure we protect that data and don't expose it? Um, but this slide is really more also just a reminder that the I T world's ever-changing and I see it regularly in my job. No government is too big or too small to be hacked. Most of them are employees clicking on links, so just want to make sure our I T group is training our people and making sure we're doing everything we can to protect the data we have. Um, and Gatsby is always busy. We've had a bunch of Gatsby's the last few years. We're kind of getting a break from them. Next year, there's nothing really big on the horizon, but when those come, Richard and I will get them implemented and we do continue to provide free C P E to a lot of our clients. There's twenty-eight hours annually. They're virtual. Richard and his team attend those. They are heavy on government accounting. Um, but anyone at the city is welcome to attend if they need C P E. I can get you signed up. And that's really it. Like I said, it's a clean opinion. We appreciate the city partnering with us and we fully expect that you will receive the G F O A Excellent in Financial Reporting Award for this twenty-twenty-four report. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Uh, if someone, in order to see the council members who are not here, I probably need the presentation to go away. So uh, no, never mind. It's okay. Back, okay. Alright. Does anyone have questions or comments? Anybody virtual have a question or comment? Tom, John, Stacy. Uh, Councilwoman Lautenbacher.
Thank you for the audit results. I am going to pose the question that came up in public comment. Why did it take almost seven months to give us an audit for our December thirty-first closing?
Uh, well, the deadline is six months from the state and the G F O A and you know, we could get an audit done much faster, but we do your audit once a year. Um, public companies get audited pretty much year-round. They issue quarterly financial reports for their stockholders. They're required to do that. Governments are not required to do that, so it takes a lot longer to do an audit when we just do it at the end of the year. Um, that's pretty normal for all governments that I work with.
Did you say we needed it in six months and we didn't have it in that time?
No, you didn't.
We did. Finished it in the end of June.
Yeah, we filed it in early June, I believe.
This is just the report now.
This is just me presenting, so you've had it for quite a while now, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That was my question too, Josh. Um, yeah, G F O A says that audits are to be done by six months, so I guess uh, next year, look, it just said an F Y I saying it's been transmitted. Uh, what is the timing usually? So you'd transmitted and then, so we're looking at after that presenting. Is that basically how it flows?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I I think one of the things that maybe Richard could come explain is our revenue flow. So every year, for example, at the end of February. So Georgia Power for their franchise fee, they have to get it to us by the last day of February. And they like to hand the mayors a check. And it's always like February twenty-sixth. They used to do the big checks. They don't do that anymore, but there's like a luncheon and I don't usually go, but they bring the check. So that, Richard, if you'll come up and talk a little bit about the, and that that franchise fee money is for the year before, correct?
Yes.
And how much, I can't, you would think I remember because it's the largest amount of money I ever have in my hand every, ever, each year. And it was how much?
Thirty-point-two million.
Right, three-point-two million dollars. So it's a pretty significant part of our revenue every year. But there's no solid set. Uh, we just kind of have to estimate, correct?
Correct.
Each year.
Yes.
Yeah. And then I presume the other franchise fees come in similarly timed.
Correct.
After the year.
Pay quarterly. A lot of the cable providers and telephone telephone providers pay quarterly.
But not Georgia Power.
Georgia Power, yes.
Okay, which is our biggest.
Correct. That's our, by far, our biggest.
Our biggest, okay. Anybody else have questions? Uh, go ahead.
I asked about the website. If the, this report, I know it's coming to us at the end of July, but it was finalized at the end of June. Is it not on the website?
Yes, it's on the website.
Under.
Yeah, if you go to the finance page and then financial reports, I believe.
Yep.
And there's a section for monthly reports and a section for annual reports. It should be, if you open up the dropdown, it should be under the annual reports, I believe.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Alright, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Alright, good evening. Uh, tonight, we're here to listen to the comprehensive plan. This is the first reading uh, and public hearing. Um, the state makes us do a public hearing on this. You are not approving the plan tonight. You're only consenting to send it off the D C A and uh, Atlanta Regional Commission. After they take about sixty days to review it, it will come back to you all. We'll have another public hearing. Uh, and that will be the the approval uh, of that. So, um, I just wanted to announce that. Uh, I'll be up here. Uh, Allison Stewart-Harris is here as well to present the plan. Uh, and it'll take about a half an hour, so. Thank you.
Or maybe a little less than half an hour, but we'll uh, we'll, we'll get through it. Um, good evening. Thank y'all so much for having me here tonight. I'm Allison Stewart-Harris. I'm an associate principal with the local planning and architecture firm, T S W. Um, it's my pleasure tonight to present to you the comprehensive plan. Um, as Richard mentioned, this is a public hearing. The state requires two public hearings as part of the process, and this is your second one. Uh, we had our first one about a year ago when we kicked off the process. Um, just a reminder, the comprehensive plan, this is a very high-level policy guidance document. Um, this is something that the state requires you all to update every five years. So even though the time horizon of this document is twenty years, every five years you will be updating this. Um, this document has been out in front of the public for uh, many months in its different iterations. So what I wanted to do tonight was sort of go through some of uh, the most recent additions and changes to the document. Hit the highlights and then of course, um, be here and happy to answer any questions y'all may have. So, uh, we mentioned earlier, uh, this hearing tonight is to approve sending the plan to D C A and A R C. D C A is your, the state agency for community affairs. A R C is the regional commission. So both of those uh, agencies would review the plan to make sure that it is in compliance with state requirements. Uh, again, you are not adopting the plan tonight. You would would just be approving to send it along. Um, I want to share a little bit about some of the engagement we've been doing. Um, this is our overall timeline of engagement throughout the process. Um, every star you see on this graphic is a point where we engage the public. Uh, we also had a number of stakeholder interviews. We had a very robust steering committee uh, with a lot of robust discussion. Um, we've also had a series of pop-up events, public workshops and open houses. Um, at our final comprehensive plan workshop, we had over forty participants. We presented the draft land use approach. A number of you all were there. Wanted to thank you for your participation. Uh, we asked participants to take a look at the character area drafts, uh, really looking at different Uh, really looking at different densities and intensities and taking a look at those recommended land uses. Um, we had a draft document of the plan on April twenty second. So we had that final comprehensive plan workshop. We had the June second draft. Which is what I believe was online. We had another steering committee, uh, draft, uh, another steering committee meeting and we have a draft that was dated July. Third, and that is the one that you all had in review for tonight. Um, again, that document was posted online and we had a planning commission meeting. Um, we had a number of comments on. What to do, what the, what some small changes would be to move the, the draft on to DCA and ARC. So again, we have that July third draft tonight. So I want to talk first about some of the big ideas. Um, with comprehensive plans, again, this is that very high level look at growth and development in Dunwoody. Uh, you can do your comprehensive plan many different ways, but through the engagement process, we heard a few things very clearly. Um, number one was maintain our neighborhoods. Um, number two, keep investing perimeter and number three, cultivate local centers. Um, I do want to note that in an earlier draft, we had maintain our neighborhoods. As third on the list, it was never meant to be in order, but in that July third draft, we have moved that to number one. So I wanted to share a few key points for the vision for each of these vocal areas. Um, number one again is to. Uh, maintain and protect our neighborhoods. Really, this is just all about. You know, protecting what is already here. We've heard from many of your residents, a lot of whom are here tonight, about how important these neighborhoods are. This is the reason why people live in Dunwoody. This is why people support state, uh, cityhood, really wanting to preserve that neighborhood character. Uh, we talked a lot about perimeter as well, um, less so in the public meetings and more so during the steering committee. Um, you know. Perimeter is very different than the rest of your community. It is a really important part of your tax space. So you'll see that some of the policies. Addressing perimeter are a bit different than your neighborhoods. We talked a lot about the importance of your local center. So we talked about Dunwoody Village. One thing we heard throughout the public process was a real desire to have it. Downtown Dunwoody, you know, not perimeter, but a place that's really for Dunwoody, lots of local businesses, you know, a walkable, really great place. Um, Dunwoody Village is already on its way to that, but this plan really focuses on how can we kind of take that next step and make it a true heart for Dunwoody. Uh, we talked a little bit about Georgetown. Um, there's a lot of opportunity here to make it a more cohesive, well-defined place. Talked about Winter's Chapel, the importance of it as a culturally diverse neighborhood center. We also talked about Jet Ferry as a very small, kind of vibrant neighborhood scaled commercial node. And again, for each of the elements of the comprehensive plan. We have specific notes. So for each of these, we talk about, you know, what's, what's a high level land use school, housing, transportation. Economic development, sustainability and quality of life. Um, one thing that we did a little bit differently in this update to your comprehensive plan is that we have streamlined your land use policy. Into a single character area map. In your previous plan, you had a character area map, you had a land use map. It was a little bit confusing. So we said, look, let's try to, let's try to streamline this process and make it a little easier for folks to use. We've also introduced, uh, the commercial core concept, which I'll talk about in a moment, as well as the stoplight approach to future land use policy. And dug a little bit into some neighborhood transition opportunities. So I mentioned this, uh, the importance of the character area map. Uh, this is a part of. Part of what can be really confusing about comprehensive plans is what's a character area versus what's future land use versus what's zoning. So when we're talking about character areas tonight, I would like y'all to think of these as geographies. These are neighborhoods. It's not a future land use map and it's certainly not zoning. Each of these, uh, character areas, each of these geographies in your plan has a set of future land uses. Where we categorize them as appropriate, maybe appropriate with some considerations and not appropriate. So again, this is meant as a tool. To help you all as city council and help the community really try to decide what is best for these different areas. Um, I mentioned, we also have introduced this idea of the commercial core. Um, so in some of your commercial centers. We do think that there's a difference between, say, the core perimeter and the outer edges of it. We want to recognize that there might be. A difference in density and intensity and really, really making sure to try to respect that transition area between the commercial heart of these areas. And the neighboring residential areas, particularly when we are talking about single family residential. Um, I mentioned this stoplight policy in the green, yellow and red. So again, this is a new part of your comprehensive plan, um, for every character area. So again. Every geography, we talk about these uses that are in green. We say, you know, this gives support to a rezoning if a current district does not allow it. Um, you'll see in your comprehensive plan that anything noted with a plus will have enhanced standards as part of your UDO. So we will be. Doing your unified development ordinance right on the heels of this comprehensive plan. Anything that's in yellow is appropriate with considerations. This is where a lot of land uses are falling. We know as a community, Dunwoody likes to weigh in. On these different proposals. We want to make sure there's that opportunity. So a lot of these yellow uses are saying, okay. These might be appropriate here, but let's dig into this a little bit more. Let's have an extra layer of public review. And discussion to make sure that these are what we want. Um, and most of the time that will be a special land use permit process or SLEP. Um, red is just sort of the no-go inappropriate, not permitted. Um, another thing that we talked a lot about and have actually rolled back quite a bit is this neighborhood transition opportunity. Um, one thing that we've heard from some members of your community is that, you know, it's really hard to find housing in Dunwoody if you're a young family. You're trying to downsize. There aren't a lot of great homeownership opportunities here that are, that are within reach for many households. So we were looking at different ways. So how can you look for this sort of missing middle? So these are, um, you know, it can be townhouses. It could be, you know. Two-unit homes. So we looked at opportunities to say, okay, where could these go? So we. Knew very clearly that in the middle of the neighborhoods was not going to be the right place. So we looked at opportunities for. Around your key commercial centers like Dunwoody Village, like Georgetown, within about a quarter mile of, you know, properties that are facing. A main corridor. We thought these might be opportunities for that slightly higher density of housing. Um, it turns out to be a pretty small handful. Of parcels that'd be eligible for this, but we wanted to try to see if this was an opportunity to have a little bit more housing diversity in Dunwoody. So I want to dive a little bit into the character areas. Um, these are a lot of slides. I'm going to go through these fairly quickly. Um, otherwise we'd be here for about two hours. But, um, again, I want to remind you all that this, these are geographies. This is not a future land use map. Um, we started this process off by looking at your previous character area map and we said, okay, there's a few key changes that we, we think would be really helpful. Um, the first thing I want to point out is, um, Ashford. So in your previous comprehensive plan. Ashford was actually considered part of the perimeter character area. Um, I think a lot of the folks here tonight would agree that Ashford is not perimeter. So we wanted to make sure that that had its own set of policies. Uh, we also pulled out a few different areas from the broad suburban neighborhood area, which is, which is what's in yellow. And we want to recognize that they had distinct characters. So for example, Brook Run Park, civic campuses and waterworks. Um, we also split Winter's Chapel into two. There's Winter's Chapel, which is the main commercial part. And then also Peach Street Boulevard, which is primarily your residential part of that area. So with that, I mentioned that these character areas, these are geographies. For each geography, we have that table of. Land uses that we think are appropriate, may be appropriate or not appropriate. So for every character area, we have given each of these land uses a suggested. Place in that chart. So we talked about large lot residential, which Dunwood has many, many, many different parcels. We have small lot residential, cottage court, house scale plexes. Townhomes, multi-unit, senior assisted living, mixed use. Uh, we have a number of different commercial uses and this is a little bit of a deviation from your previous plan. We wanted to really try to differentiate between those local businesses, like the type of stuff that people really want to see in Dunwoody Village, for example. So we want more of that, but we don't necessarily want a lot more drive-throughs. We don't want, you know, a lot of these curb cuts, this more suburban style development. So we wanted to try to differentiate between those two things. Talk about local commercial heavy, regional commercial. These are your larger skilled office, big box retail. And then we have a number of uses that are typically appropriate at all different character areas. So this is public institutional. Parks and open space and utilities and transportation. So I'm going to go through each of the character areas fairly quickly, just to kind of hit the highlights. Um, start with suburban neighborhoods. This is by far your largest character area. Uh, listed as appropriate, we have large lot residential, small lot residential, and then the three uses that are allowed everywhere. So. Public institutional, parks, open space, utilities and transportation. Um, these appropriate with considerations. This again would mean that all, any of these uses would, would require a separate level of. Public review and consideration. And then pretty much any intense land use is considered inappropriate in the red. For each of the character areas, we have some sample imagery. We talk a little bit about how we would recommend updating your unified development ordinance. So again, this is really just that next step of this process of translating your comprehensive plan into a zoning code. Cause your comprehensive plan is not the code. Um, and then we have a list of projects and initiatives. This is largely projects that you already have underway. That we've consolidated into these different areas. So you sort of have an easy access guide. I'm going to start over with the, uh, the perimeter core. So this is the, the most intense part of Dunwoody. You'll see the chart on the right. Again, with our appropriate land uses, appropriate considerations, inappropriate. So this is, this is the one part of Dunwoody where we're showing. That these higher intensity land uses are appropriate. Um, I also want to point out in the bottom left-hand corner, we have something that's called a transect. It's sort of a nerdy city planner word for basically how intense or how tall a building can be. So each of these character areas not only has a. Transect that talks about density and intensity, but has that stoplight chart that talks about what those uses can maybe or should not be. Um, so we also then we said, okay, instead of just having one single perimeter or character area, let's talk a little bit about that transition between perimeter. And some of the neighborhoods nearby. So you'll see that the density intensity in that transit goes way down to two to six stories. The number of appropriate uses goes down and for example, the appropriate with considerations, we now see multi-unit in there. And just some sample images of the, of the intensity that we would expect to see here. When we talked about Dunwoody Village, um, we talked about about two to five stories right in that core. That is not the area that abuts your single family neighborhoods. So we talked about some of the appropriate uses such as townhouses, uh, local commercial light. Uh, mixed use, again, it would have to be within that transect, um, appropriate with considerations and inappropriate. Again, some recommendations for how we would update the UDO, the different projects and initiatives that are already underway or recommended in other planning pursuits. Talk a little bit about the Dunwoody Village transition. This is one to three stories. So again, it's really trying to buffer between the core of Dunwoody Village and the surrounding neighborhoods. Uh, we'll go down to Georgetown. Um, this is an area that got sort of, uh, got a little bit of a facelift during this comprehensive plan. So this is the core area, saying it's about two to ten stories. Again, this is an area that we do see has, has some potential to accommodate additional growth. Um, you've got great access to two eighty-five. There's some large lots there. We have a number of appropriate uses, some appropriate with consideration. Um, and again, a lot of these will also have additional use standards to be applied through the UDO process. Similar to the other commercial cores, we differentiate between the core and the transition. So again, we have sort of a much, uh, lower. Intensity for these areas, one to three stories, um, very, um, broad range of these lower intensity land uses are considered appropriate. And then you, if you were to come in here with a multi-unit or mixed use proposal, you'd have to go through that extra set of public review. When we go over to Georgetown East, uh, very similar. So we've got two to five stories in this area. Again, you've got pretty good access to two eighty-five. A large amount of appropriate land uses towards the, uh, the lower end of the intensity scale, uh, number of uses that are appropriate with considerations. And as inappropriate, we have large lot residential. Scooting over to the Winter's Chapel core, um, again, this is one to four stories, so still pretty low in intensity. Um, the goal here is to really try to, um, try to support this core to become a, a better quality center, better shopping. Uh, more walkability. So we have a, a larger number of uses as appropriate here. Similarly, the Winter's Chapel transition, um, one to three stories and its intensity of a fair amount of appropriate uses. Going up to Jet Ferry, um, this one does not have a transition. It's just a very small area in itself. Uh, what, again, one to three stories, pretty low in its intensity and a very large range of uses that could be appropriate, such as local commercial light. Small lot residential cottage court. Uh, we'll go over to Ashford, which I know is an area of, of concern for a lot of folks here tonight. Um. We have this area again, as, uh, this was originally part of perimeter. We have set it apart as its own area in this comprehensive plan. Uh, initially, we had had this areas going up to five stories for, um, for any type of development. Through the public process, folks said, we, you know, we were really not comfortable with that. So we, we knocked that down to four stories, but we set up to five. For commercial uses to reflect what's already there. Uh, we also initially had multi-unit and mixed use as appropriate, but through the public comment period. We have knocked that down to appropriate with considerations. And again, you can see the plus there as additional use standards would be applied through the UDO update. Uh, then we have Peachtree Boulevard. We're getting to the end, I promise. Um, and this is towards your, your southeastern corner. Um, this is two to ten stories. Uh, we've got a lot of different types of appropriate land uses. Um, there was some, some question in the planning commission meeting about, you know, why, why so high? Why ten stories? The reason behind this in this area is that this is your area with the most affordable housing in Dunwoody. So if I were a developer, I would say, okay, I, I want to come in. But we don't want to lose affordability for a developer to be able to build nicer, newer affordable housing. They would have to build at a higher. Density to make that work from their end. So I did want to point out that that is a high height, but there was a reason behind it. And again, it was part of an affordable housing strategy, assuming at some point that land would turn over and that. The intent would not be for that to just turn over into some, you know, luxury high-rise housing. We do also, uh, like I mentioned before, we pulled out civic campuses from the, the suburban neighborhoods. We wanted to recognize you've got a lot of these adjacencies here. Right in the middle of, uh, your suburban neighborhoods. Uh, we don't know of any plans that are going to come in and change this anytime soon. But we wanted to at least provide somewhat of a roadmap, just in case something were to happen to one of these institutions and they were going to redevelop. So again, pretty, pretty modest density, intensity of one to four stories. Uh, we also pulled out Brook Run Park as its own, uh, character area. Uh, we had a lot of debate about this, but pulled it out. Um, again, not, we're not envisioning a lot of development there. If there is anything, it was, it's more envisioned to be sort of like a commercial kiosk. So like a place you can get ice cream while you're enjoying the park with your family. Um, and then finally, we pulled out Water Works. Obviously, not a lot of development would be happening here, but we wanted to recognize that this is a very different part of Dunwoody. This is not an area where y'all have a whole lot of agency over. We don't see any changes, but we wanted to differentiate it from the suburban neighborhoods. So I want to touch on a couple of other components of the comprehensive plan and the next steps. Um, one of the big parts of your comprehensive plan is your community work program. This is a required element from the state. This is essentially your to-do list for the next five years. So you'll see all of that together in a single place. Um, it integrates a lot of your, uh, projects from previous plans. Um, it pulls out projects and initiatives from the character, uh, profiles. Um, and this was reviewed by multiple departments within the city. So we've tried to create this consolidated list for y'all to kind of reference as y'all are making your decisions. Um, this community work program is organized by the six plan elements of land use, housing, transportation, economic development, sustainability and quality of life. Um, and that's really the end of your plan. Now this process will continue on into working on your unified development ordinance. Um, but like we've mentioned a couple of times tonight, um, what we're asking for you all is to consider approving the plan, send it to DCA. And ARC for the review. Uh, one thing I do want to note, um, if you do decide to send it on tonight. This doesn't mean your plan is calcified forever and you can't make any changes. You can make small changes. If it's a major change, you would need to go back. So for example, if you made a big change to your character area map or one of those stoplights. You probably wouldn't want to do that after sending it along, but it's not like this is set in stone as soon as you send it off. So I wanted to make sure y'all were aware of that. Um, I do want to remind you all that your state deadline is October thirty first, like Richard mentioned. Uh, there's a specific timeline that this goes through. The state has about forty to fifty days to review this. The city gets it back. We look at the comments. Uh, we come back to you all again for approval. So this process can take a little while. So it might seem like, oh, we've got plenty of time until October thirty first. It's actually not a whole lot of time. So. If there's concerns, we certainly want to get this addressed, but we do want to keep in mind this deadline. If you miss your deadline. There are some implications for the types of funding that you would be available to pursue should you miss it. And with that, um, I'm happy to take any questions or I'm not sure if we go right to public comment.
We do. Let me go right to public hearing if you'll have a seat and then we'll be back. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing unless there's an objection. Seeing no objection, the public hearing is opened and I'm going to, we have ten minutes per side. Ten minutes if you're in support of the plan, uh, or ten minutes if you, this never makes much sense to me when we do this process, if you're opposed. Let's see if we can get it done in ten minutes because council would like to have our opportunity to provide input to. So, um, if we will start with, uh, those in favor, if there's anyone here to speak in favor of the plan as it is. All right, I don't see anybody. If you're here to speak in opposition or you have changes you want to suggest. If you will just line up down the middle, I think that's the best way to do it. We don't take cards for this. If you'll just introduce yourself, speak clearly. Um, and if, when the, if the person speaking says what you. And if, when the, if the person speaking says what you would like, if you agree with what they say, there's no need for you to stay in line, how's that? Go right ahead. Uh, are we ready? Wait one second. Are we ready? Are you setting it at ten minutes? Okay, all right. And you don't need a card for this, but go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Dan Weber, Ben in Dunwoody, about twenty-eight years like Mr. Cohen. I love Dunwoody, um, love the work that we're doing here, love the community. This presentation has been jointly developed with Susan Mitchell, Sue Ellis and Robert Wittenstein. We're the ones who have been communicating with the community, make them aware of what's going on in Ashford and sent out the petition. The petition, which has been signed by over four hundred people now, um, requests three things. Number one, that the Dominion project rezoning be denied. You'll have a hearing on that August eleventh. It does relate somewhat to what I'm talking about here in this presentation, I'll explain that. Number two, we wanted to maintain the neighborhoods to be uh, top priority on page forty-eight, that change has been made. And then edit number two to the plan, which I'm going to talk about is on the Ashford Stoplight, moving mixed used and multi-unit on page forty-eight from yellow to red. Is that a major change? Because if it is, does it need to be done tonight before it's sent out? Okay, this is not a change that should wait another sixty days after D C A review. There's a handout, I don't know if you have the handout.
We do.
Okay, go to page three, you'll see uh, the, the twenty twenty-five comp plan that's being considered. You'll see perimeter center, uh, there's a statement there on page eighty-four that any redevelopment in the transition area, which is six stories max, should lean towards townhomes and the missing middle as was just described. Uh, and then at the bottom is the Ashford page one oh three, two pages on Ashford, one is a stoplight. Here you've got a step down in intensity to two to four stories for residential, uh, up to five stories for commercial. So the Dominion Project, for example, would be limited to four stories under this. This also has two pictures that feature townhomes and parks and open space, which I think Merity would be happy to see. So when you look at that, we feel pretty good about that idea. But then there was um, a wake up call. When concurrent with this, the Dominion application for rezoning came under app, under consideration. The concern is illustrated by this map, which was circulated with the petition. Here you have the Ashford area, here's the Life South Building. Here's two office buildings that are most likely to be redeveloped in the future. Dunwoody Village, shots of Dunwoody, the Methodist Church, the Baptist Church, single family housing all the way around this character area, that's significant. The um, Dominion Project nominally six stories, up to ninety-five feet, according to staff in their early July memo to the Planning Commission. That's the equivalent of eight stories in elevation because of the parking garage below. Uh, it has a density of sixty-four units per acre. That's more than twice what would be allowed, the highest density associated with R M H D, which as you know, is the highest zoning category for density, which is thirty units per acre. It's more than twi, more than three times the existing density in the apartments across the street at twenty units per acre and the three condo buildings there with sixteen units per acre. So that's shown twenty-five acres. Here is all the Jefferson Apartments, here's the condos. The people who are speaking tonight are from these neighborhoods, a lot of them. So you can see, and then there are concerned citizens from Dunwoody Station, Valley View and so on. So that shows you how it fits into the community. There are a couple of pages with photos of these properties, Jefferson Apartments, which are three story, the assisted living, which is three story, the condos, which are four story. And then one of the office buildings, South Office Building, which is five stories. Driving through their parking lot a week or so ago during business hours, there were twelve cars in their parking garage, it's, it's pretty grossly. So we anticipate potential redevelopment. The problem is with the Dominion Project, if that gets approved, that sets a precedent for this area. And it feels like it's undercutting this plan that this plan that's being presented for the Ashford area, two to four stories, before it even drives, before it's even submitted for consideration. Uh, that's why we're going to be speaking on August eleven, also opposing the uh, rezoning. Now, if you go to page seven, the rationale for what we're requesting is set forth in the current uh, comp plan. At pages twelve through thirteen, under expand housing choices for seniors. There's a paragraph that I quote there in blue, there's a recognition that there's a lack of housing stock for older residents who are leaving their neighborhoods to move into. That's recognized in yellow recognizes a need for smaller, lower maintenance homes and so on, townhomes to move into reasonable proximity to the traditional neighborhoods people are moving out of. And then in red, it states that there's a need for a comprehensive strategy to address this. It's a good thing if um, older residents move out of neighborhoods, as you know, because younger families move in, it revitalizes the neighborhood, the schools, the community. A rough estimate, maybe three thousand households out of the ten thousand in the neighborhoods are looking to downsize or would consider doing so. In my neighborhood, it's about forty percent, uh, as I go around the neighborhood situated like we are at this point. So on the last page, you know, we really have two communities in Dunwoody. One is what I'll call the more transient community, it lives in apartments. Uh, and then there's a single family neighborhood. Uh, I've always viewed it's our responsibility of those who participate in, in these kinds of meetings and so on, to look out for the people and the property owners of the apartments as stewards on their behalf. And I think we do a good job. When I look at the comprehensive plan going forward, there's a lot of consideration given to expanding density as it relates to rental units. But where is the comprehensive plan to address the needs of long time residents? I don't see it. We have an opportunity here in the Ashford uh, district to do that. Instead of instead of six to eight stories with sixty-four units per acre, why don't we develop a village concept for older residents? It could be townhomes, it could be cottages, part of it could be age restricted. You could have some low income housing, but do it at a scale that is kind of by contemplated by the comprehensive plan. Doing that, do it at a scale that's more of a neighborhood scale, one to three to four stories. So that's our request, that's what led us to, to make this specific request that multi-unit and multi-use be moved from yellow to red. You know, there's a lot of concern within the community. You can see the organizational chart here, I've always thought people at Dunwoody are smart. They're wise, they're charitable, they're kind, they care about things. I always tended to listen to them when I was elected office. It's important to do that. And I hope you'll honor this chart and listen to their voice now, what they're telling you. Thank you.
Um, how much time? A minute thirty, so we have a minute thirty. If, I want to encourage you to speak on this plan. Okay, because that's what's in front of us tonight.
Understood, uh, Robert Wittenstein, eleven forty-six, Porto Court. I've reached out to several of you uh, in the weeks before this to express my feelings on this. And one of the council members said to me, you know, as long as it's yellow, it's okay, because we'll always get a chance to review it before it happens. And I want to challenge that a little bit. And the difference between yellow and red is staff's recommendation. Staff is relied on for their expertise. And if it's yellow, then it comes to planning commission and to city council with staff saying, yes, it meets the requirements for the planning, uh, 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 the, the comp plan and, and they'll recommend approval. If it's red, then staff will be obligated to take the reverse position. And I think that's really important and that's what I would encourage you to consider tonight, thank you.
How much time is left, about a minute?
This is going to be real short.
Okay.
I have a question, I'm Judy Miller, I'm from Dunwoody North, been here forty-two years. What concerns me about the plan is keep referring to multi-use dwellings. They don't specify what that means. They don't talk about density. They list, well, it could be this and it could be that. It needs to be specific.
Okay, all right. With council's approval, five more minutes. All right, so we're going to add five minutes.
Madam, madam mayor, if you add, you have to add for both sides.
Okay, well, five minutes for the other side, but no one spoke when they took the first ten minutes. All right, Mayor Shortle, five minutes. Wait, one second, wait, don't start yet, because I got to get it ready.
I'll, I'll keep it on my watch.
We're just going to do it by hand. All right, oh wait, we're not quite ready, Sharon, you'll give Mayor Shortle hit the sign. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Danny Shortle, twenty-eleven Woodland Way, uh, I've been living here for thirty-two years with that lady that spoke a little while ago. I just uh, want to reiterate some of the things that we're going over tonight. You know, multi-units comes up in the yellow in almost every area in the uh, in this comp plan. And you know, I don't think that that's appropriate, like for the uh, Jet Ferry area, let's, let's take that area. You know, uh, multi-units over there, you know, we've got smaller, small lots and things like that, but not, not multi-units. So I, I think, uh, I think we need to take that not only in Ashford area, but maybe the perimeter area and also in Jet Ferry and maybe other areas and move it to the red. And they're just alleviated, uh, the staff standing up here, I've heard the, the, I don't know her name, Madeline, I think her name is. So well, according to comp plan, that's approved. You can do that here. Well, let's make sure that you, as Robert just said, that uh, we take that choice out of the uh, decision making and we put it in there and take a look at, you know, I've, I've sat up there, you know, and always said, you listen to the people, take a look at them out here. Look at that, look at that crowd here tonight, you know what? They're all against this plan. And then so the, the changes in this plan needs to be made. Multi-units in several areas, discuss it, move it down to the red. So it just alleviates some uh, quick talking, uh, well, what it is, quick talking, uh, uh, person come in here and tell, uh, you know, where the worry lies. So that's what I think we need to do, let's put it down in the red in certain areas. Well, we know it's not appropriate, multi-units are not appropriate in every unit, they're they're in the yellow in just about every unit, every area. So let's uh, change that and put it down there and just take, take a look at the, the people that are here tonight for this meeting. I know they come to meetings, how many people, look at them all here. They're all here and they all want to speak for that.
Okay, thank you.
To the citizens.
All right, how much time, Sharon?
Okay. I'm going to be very brief so that the others have time to speak, but I'm essentially, my name is Bridget Pivanka. I'm a resident of Ashford Chase, right down on Valley View. Um, I would like to echo what everyone else has basically been saying tonight. And I think, um, trying to limit what I, what I wanted to ask. If there is an opportunity for the council to put parameters on what is proposed, what is really best serving the residents of Dunwoody versus the developers? And as someone who moved to Dunwoody, as someone has, has some, as someone who moved to Dunwoody and sort of fled a haphazard plan in California and it really wrecked the community, I was just back there last week. We have such a golden opportunity, what can we do with green spaces? The young lady in green mentioned that would be a wonderful enhancement to a very crowded um, corridor and add color and life. And what is, what do the residents need who are vibrant and a plug for the disability community? What considerations are being given to those residents that families would like to keep close? Not affordable housing that developers profit on, but that families can keep their disabled loved ones on a fixed income. And I'm talking about adult children, what, what is Dunwoody doing to help serve that purpose as well?
Um, I think you have about forty-five seconds, come on up.
Page seventy-eight, seventy-nine of the uh, comp plan, they uh, basically looking at eminent domain. What you guys have tried to do in twenty twenty-two was take the property from uh, Land First Baptist for, for Ball Field through eminent domain, um, talked with the pastor today. Pages seventy-seven, so, excuse me, seventy-nine, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, say they're going to relook the places of worship and re, revisit the acquisition of the flood prone uh, properties for green spaces, stormwater. The, the pastor said, and, and this is on the news, I've got plenty of documentation, is city came in, posted a sign, they had turned down two five million dollar offers for that parking lot because it wasn't used. Well, damn, it was during COVID. The city offered three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for that and you're about to do it again and you're on notice. Uh, this is, this is highway robbery.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. I think we need the opportunity to talk and answer people's questions. Unless someone objects, we, because we have a, we have a lot, I mean, this is my, just my markups, I'm one person up here. So if you can say it in one minute, the final two.
Madam mayor, just, just point of order.
Okay.
So y'all's resolution that you operate under right now says if they're, and I'm going to read it.
Right.
The presiding officer, his discretion may also call for additional public comment periods during the meeting. They're limited to fifteen minutes. So really, the one that was called is capped at fifteen minutes, you can make it less. I didn't hear if there was a motion or not.
I just asked for them to say it's okay. All right, two minutes more, so each of you can have one minute.
Madam mayor, with all due respect, we do have a citizen who'd like to speak in favor.
Let me have, huh? They'll be on seven minutes on the favor, so let's finish this side and then we'll come back. You'll have one minute, sir, if you'll come right here, wait, I need, I'm sorry, I need to get approval from council, is that okay? Yes, okay, one minute each, come on.
Juan Lago, uh, Dunwoody Commons. I made this comment to the planning committee in the last meeting. And when we decided to move to Dunwoody, I've been, we moved here about three years ago. We've been in this area for over thirty years to, across two eighty-five, which he decided not to uh, bring in back when, back when, okay? If I had wanted to move into midtown Atlanta with the high rises and heavy duty apartments all around me, I would have. I would have a lot more amenities and a lot more restaurants and a lot more things to do than I do up here, but I would not have the residential home-like values that I have here in the north Dunwoody area, in the Ashford area. What you're proposing to do with the Dominion Project is basically the beginning of turning this area into midtown Atlanta with six, eight, ten story apartment buildings. If that's what you want in your community, I don't know, we may move, because that's not where we want to live. The other thing is that everything you do north of this area right here is made to look taller because of the hill going up. Okay, so six stories is not so bad, six stories on Okay, so six stories is not so bad. Six stories on the hills are coming up, looks immense. Mostly an abomination, so I hope you'll, you'll decide to help us out and keep the character.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright. Alright, come on up, you'll have one minute. Just introduce yourself quickly, and then.
Barrett Jackson, I live in Ashworth Community, which is on the backside of the proposal and the location that you guys are considering. My issue is that most of the traffic that runs up and down the street, we've listened to it on a daily basis, night in, night out. It's already enough noise. And I'm concerned about adding in dense properties that will create and add more, more congestion, one, and noise that we have to deal with, and it's, it's happening all hours of the night. The reason I moved to Dunwoody a couple of years ago was because this is a neighborhood, and it is critical for somebody with, like myself, with young kids, to be in a community-type of environment. So I, I'm absolutely against this. And, you know, my biggest concern is that developers come in and they sell these ideas, and, you know, we have not defined what this is gonna be, and then it ends up turning into luxury apartments, and it brings all type of elements, and, and more problems than there are health. So I'm absolutely against this, and I think that we need to seriously reconsider.
Thank you. Alright, we will have seven minutes. In favor, if you'll just introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Colin May. I live in the woodlands over there on Jet Ferry. I wanna say that I'm in favor of any kind of growth. Helps our economy here, helps our people, helps all our restaurants, all our businesses, any kind of growth and any kind of plan that helps our staff make better decisions is a good one. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, is there anyone else that wants to speak? You know what, we need, we can be respectful. It's okay if we don't all agree. If, does anyone else want to speak in for? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and begin the council discussion and questions of staff. I wanna start, because I, I'm gonna take a moment or two of mayoral privilege to make a couple of points about what we're doing here today, tonight. Because there, because of a coincidence of timing, I think some things have gotten mixed up. This is a process, someone asked why we were doing this. This is a process required by the state to update or adopt a comprehensive plan. It is required by the Department of Community Affairs. And it has, well, it has, and it has a lot of implications. The biggest implication, which someone said, there's a couple of implications. One is it tell, when we adopt it, which is not tonight, we are showing the community our big-picture vision, not just for today or tomorrow, but for the next twenty years, right? The other thing it does is, is it tells developers, potentially, what we might want. But I wanna make something really clear that I think there's a lot of confusion about. I know there's, I've had conversations over the last few weeks. Even, even a use in red, a developer can ask for. I wanna be really clear. And while we cannot comment on ongoing rezonings, and there are several going on right now, there are, there are incidents, incidents, there are examples of developments where the developer has been told by our staff, we will not recommend this project, and they choose to proceed. There is a public process as defined by state law that, not just for this, but for any rezoning. And if we approve this entire plan as is, no land is rezoned. We still have to go through a process when someone files. So I just wanna be really clear that, because I think things got, have gotten muddled, that nothing we, with a few exceptions, there's a few land uses that cities and, or counties are allowed in Georgia to forbid. There's not many where somebody can't come in and ask to build. But for the most part, a developer has the, it's really not about the developer, y'all. It's about the property owner. And in Georgia, we are a very, very pro-property rights state. And quite frankly, every year, the legislature tries to take away a little more power from local governments even regulating zoning. So I, I just wanna be careful, though, that we understand that no matter what color something is listed in, that a developer can come in and ask permission. Our staff can say no, and they are still allowed to proceed, and it's happened before. It's happening now, and it'll happen again. So I just wanna be clear, because we are a very desirable location. Alright, Councilman Lambert is gonna say a few words. Bless you, Stacy. I could see you sneezed.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Councilman Lambert.
Can you hear me?
No, can't hear ya.
Okay, I unmuted myself.
Tom, I can hear you fine.
Okay, so must be in the speaking.
Yeah, I can hear you fine too, Tom.
Okay, must be the council chambers.
We can hear you now.
Okay, okay, thank you. Alright, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to say a few words. I had the privilege of being the council representative on the steering committee for, for the, for the comprehensive plan. And first, let me begin by saying I apologize, I can't be there in person tonight. I had a medical issue that prevented that from happening. But I am participating, so, but I did wanna take this opportunity to thank the members of the steering committee. This was a, this was a long process. This is going on well over twelve months of, of, of meetings, several meetings, several long meetings. It was mentioned in the presentation by Allison, but this is, we had some really, really great discussions in those meetings. I've served on a lot of committees in my time, and this is probably the most engaged committee that I've had the privilege of working with. Everybody was, was participating, understood the importance of what we were trying to do, and was not afraid to share their opinions. And so that, that came from that. So I, I wanna thank the members of the steering committee, because this has, it was a big commitment to, to do this over, over the course of a year, several meetings, many hours, so I do appreciate them doing that. I'd also like to just take a moment to also thank the members of the public that participated in this process, everything from comments made tonight, but also, again, this has been a year-long process. There's been online surveys, there've been town hall meetings, there've been pop-up meetings, there's been sessions out in the public. So every, everyone that has participated in this process, thank you. It's important for us to hear from our residents and use that as, as the guide for the decisions we make, and that's really what came up where this plan originated. This was based on the feedback that we received from the community over that year-long process. As, as a member of the steering committee, I had the opportunity to see the draft plan a little earlier than most people, and I submitted to, 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 to our community development director and to our, to TSW several pages of notes, my comments on what I thought needed to be addressed in the comprehensive plan as it was drafted. Many of those have been addressed already, so I, I don't see any reason to revisit those. However, I, I wanna point out that the mayor and myself have met a few times and discussed some other concerns. I've shared those with her, and we've, we've kinda come up with some proposals for that. And just based on the fact that I'm remote and you're just hearing a voice coming out of the ceiling, I think it's probably easier to let the mayor present that portion of it in person at the meeting, so I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor Deutsch.
Thank you. Alright, so council, if it's okay with y'all, I've been thinking all afternoon about how to do this, and I've been kind of all over the place. But I think it's best to go through each character area individually, I think, unless someone has, I mean, because I could read my three, our, Tom and I's three pages. But I think that might get confusing if we go through each character area. If that's okay with y'all, so. And then there's like the whole, right, there's other stuff too, which I think we'll do at the end. Okay, well, that's good, then you don't have anything to say the rest of it. But, and so the first character area is the suburban character area. And we, what is Eric y'all's preference? Do we put a motion on the table and then make amendments? Or do we list the changes, get consensus, and then approve them? Or something? What's your preference?
It doesn't matter either way. We'll incorporate those changes and vote on each of them or all of them.
Mayor, I concur with that. I, I would, I would have your discussion first, before you form a motion.
And then we'll remember what, somebody's gonna take notes or whatever, okay? Well, and I have my notes anyway, okay?
And that's an excellent point, and y'all have that, Richard? You got note? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with suburban neighborhood, the, for me, there's two, for us, there's two major changes. One is that the page about neighborhood transition opportunities, page eighty, I'd like to scratch that page, and I want to explain why. For two reasons. One is that as a community, we've spent an awful lot of energy over the last, well before cityhood, trying to keep commercial from encroaching into single-family neighborhoods. Is ten years from now, that going to still be a community priority? I don't know. It very well may not be, right? The world could be a really different place in ten years. But like I said at the beginning of this, land, property owners have the right to come in and ask for a change. I do not think it is necessary for us to signal that that is a priority for us. And by including it in the plan, it signals that this is something that is a priority, and that we are eager to welcome, and I'm not a hundred, I really, I don't think that there's an indication. I get more than anybody in this room, because I've spent a lot of the last six years working on housing, the need for missing-middle housing, but I think it should come organically to us as opposed to inviting potential encroachment. That's the only way I can think to say it. I, I know from my experience that when somebody tried to open a State Farm office at the front catty corner to my neighborhood in a house that wasn't well-received, I, I think that that's my perspective on that page. I don't know if anybody feels differently.
Yeah, are we gonna talk about?
Yes, that's what we're doing, because we have to build consensus. Catherine? Oh, Rob?
I'd rather hear.
Okay, I feel differently. I like the neighborhood transition opportunities. They're talking about housing more than encroaching with commercial interests. I think that if I were to drive from my house to Donnie Village, there's a little section in which this would be in the transition area, and if we had the cottage courts, or the house scale plexes, or townhouses in those areas, I think that would be fine. I think when we say we're missing middle housing, we need to build it, and we need to plan for it, and we need to decide that that is what we wanna do. I think that is what these transition opportunities are. I like them.
Okay.
Just one observation. The one thing I like about this is that it sets a linear distance for where we're considering, which I think is, that, that may be important. If, if things are gonna crop up organically, if somebody is a mile away from a commercial node, they've got a sense that that's not really a spot where it's gonna even get consideration. So I, I don't have, I guess necessarily a super-strong opinion, but I do like the notation of a distance that, that comes with this.
I agree with Rob and Catherine.
Okay.
I like the idea that it's not same or open for business, and in no way, shape, or form does it allow commercial. But it says if you're interested in doing a different type of housing, here's where we can look at doing it with approval, and it already gives limitations, so that if it is more than a mile, like Rob said, it's not allowed, but it gives them opportunities to look at and be more creative, because if we do want different housing stock, we have to show them where would, where would we be open to allowing it. And that's what, in my mind, that's what this does.
Okay, so the last paragraph, oh, John, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for this. I, I have three pages of notes. I'm ready to talk on every single one of the character. I agree wholeheartedly with you, Madam Mayor, when it comes to these neighborhood transition opportunities. I have a motion ready to go. It sounds like it's gonna be a close vote, depending on how it goes, but.
Can you talk a little louder, John? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have three pages of notes, and I'm gonna, ready to talk on every single one of these character areas, and I have fourteen amendments ready to go on each of these if so needed. I agree wholeheartedly that the neighborhood transition opportunities on page eighty needs to be deleted, as well as all mentions of these opportunities in the community agenda and other sections too. This section on neighborhood transition opportunities talks about North Peachtree Road, which has an opportunity zone, when in reality, it is far outside the nearest community node of Georgetown. I think it's a disconnect, and it's inappropriate, is one example. I, I'm not happy with this transition area at all. I'd like that to be organically, like you said, Madam Mayor. I want this gone. I'm not happy with it. And in particular, North Peachtree is well outside the commercial zone of Georgetown. It should not be part of this plan if moving forward.
Yeah, I think that the last paragraph on that page is implement a special zoning permission process to allow neighborhoods serving commercial uses on the sites that meet the above qualifications. Again, whether this is in here or not, it can happen. But that's my perspective on this one. And the streets, to Councilman Henigan's point, and I tried to figure it all out, like where some of these streets, how they qualify. I wasn't a hundred percent sure that that was, that, that all these really, the streets all met the standards laid out in here. So, that's one change, and, and I'm gonna keep up, and we'll come back once we have a motion.
I was just saying, Madam Mayor, to clarify the streets, all it's saying is, these are the streets that are either collector or ulterior, but they're not necessarily meeting all the other, the other requirements.
No, it said the only minor arterial or collector roads this policy applies to.
Yeah, with the, 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 because of the only roads period that it would apply to. It's not saying that they meet the other requirements, but if you're not on one of those roads, then you wouldn't meet, automatically wouldn't meet the requirement.
Clearly, it's not clear. Okay.
But it mentions that it's a quarter-mile from a node, and it mentions the node for North Peachtree. The node mentioned would be Georgetown East, which Georgetown West, which is not really a node when it's that far over, when you're talking about Peachford Hospital and things of that nature. It's not a commercial node in reality.
I think they mean Jet Ferry, and North Peachtree runs into Jet Ferry.
I, I think, I think, and Richard, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I, I remember in our discussion, the North Peachtree was there because of Brook Run Park. So if somebody wanted to put a coffee shop within walking distance of Brook Run Park, that is what the, what the intention of North Peachtree was. Richard, am I correct with my memory on that?
Yes, that's correct.
John?
Well, I wholeheartedly disagree with a coffee shop on North Peachtree because of Brook Run Park. You already, as a governmental agency, you have the allowance to put a coffee shop inside Brook Run Park. There's no reason to convert a single-family home to a commercial, which would then have the camel under the tent nose, the nose, it would start a domino on North Peachtree. That's not the intent of this, or I hope this is not the intent. If you wanna put a coffee shop in Brook Run Park, please do so, but don't change the commerce, the residential feel of North Peachtree.
Okay, John, Tom, rather than Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just, I did wanna have an idea. We went deep, we started deep. I'd rather start high. I'd like to look at the plan, and I know tactically, there's some, a lot of people here with one specific iota. I've got pages of stuff that have nothing to do with neighborhood character areas that are just aspirational, and where are we going with the city? So what I'd like to elevate the conversation to, and I'll, I'll get to my neighborhood transitions comment, is what message are we saying with this plan? What is our vision? What are our? What is our vision? What are our aspirations? And it seems to me, we've all been to these policy meetings and stuff, it's about setting the stage to encourage and actively promote missing middle housing. And this is just my, my viewpoints, but we hear it in the past, uh, homes that our first responders, educators and medical workers can afford. And, and I'd like to have that, like at the, at the prelude, at the, you know, uh, whatever the word call, I'm not a spelling bee, at the, at the beginning of this thing. But what else do we, can we do? We can affect maybe twenty percent of the cost of building a home, maybe? Is how do we reduce the cost of building a Dunwoody where land is prohibitively expensive by allowing more housing in selected areas? Reducing setbacks, administrative hurdles, et cetera. So that's just my overall converse, uh, speak, but neighborhood transitions, um. Well, we could change the name to commercial node transitions. You could say there's commercial nodes. And we're gonna, we're gonna maybe enhance and have housing, more housing options around our commercial nodes. Um, that would promote economic activities, supporting the businesses in those centers as we build out our save and connected path network. We cite those homes within a quarter mile, thirteen hundred and twenty feet. Adjacent, they can walk, they don't have to drive. Look. Is that what we're talking about in Dunwoody Village? So we already have a plan right now, Dunwoody Village in this current plan. It says two to four stories. Well, that's neighborhood transition. It's Dunwoody Village because it's right around neighborhoods. So if you don't like neighborhood transitions, you don't like the Dunwoody Village, I guess, too. I'm just talking. Um, I live in a neighborhood transition development that was built in the nineteen eighties. A small lot. I have a hundred foot wide lot by a hundred foot deep lot, but I live in a thirty, two hundred square foot home. A Jase, and was built adjacent to townhomes. And I'm nine hundred feet away from uh Krama Cafe, eight hundred and twenty feet away from a Chick-fil-A. And our home sell for a premium. I'm over there at Jet Ferry. So. Are you saying right now that you wouldn't, if, if it was, if our place, we just showed what our one hundred homes there? Or was two story offices that? We shouldn't encourage people to like live nearby these commercial nodes? So. You know, if you want to use the semantics, call it a commercial no transition for, for housing.
That update. Okay, that's actually a pretty good idea. Um. Is that? So I'm making a list. Of things we'll need to come back to. Um. And then. My, one of the things, Richard, that I think I had, uh, Tom and I had spoken to you about. Is this idea and, and I had sent an email even, I think, last week that for, if we're gonna have a civic. Campuses. Use, it needs to be all the civic campuses. It needs to be the places of worship. It needs to be the schools. It needs to be um. You can't just have the J and the college, frankly. And the Dunwoody Baptist Church, First Baptist Church is the same size as the JCC. So. I'm, there is a chance that sometime in someone in this room's lifetime, some of that stuff might redevelop. But it ought to be treated. As the same, and also we know that there's a chance they're gonna close some schools, right, or a school. So, but we ought to have that with the, all those campuses should be treated the same. Um, for potential redevelopment. Uh, because I don't think it makes sense. To not. Go ahead.
The only observation I'm gonna make with that is, especially since you mentioned First Baptist. That's right by the highway.
Does not matter. You can, I don't think you can treat. One institution differently than another. I mean, that's, I'm one seventh of this board.
I guess I'm just wondering if they, if they wanted to do something even with their own property.
But they're allowed to do something with their own property. They're allowed to ask. No, nothing we said in this document said they can't come and ask. Uh, John?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, um, let me read something. I, I, your point on uh the JCC is. Identical to what I was thinking. Let me read my statement so you have an idea where I am on this evening. Before us tonight is the City of Dunwoody's fourth proposed comprehensive land use plan. It is very different from the other three previously presented as this plan in front of us encourages high density. Residential development in commercial areas. And infill development along major thoroughfares where single family homes now stand. This plan also highlights properties owned by governments and a single nonprofit. Giving them and their land special rights if the property were to be developed or sold. The governmental agencies have already have expanded rights to use their property as they see fit. For example, we could put a coffee shop in Brook Run. Uh, so there is no need to do this action for them. But the proposed property rights change for the nonprofit is, in my opinion, a gratuity. To a specific landowner that is not being offered to any other nonprofit or religious organization. This is just wrong. I will ask that these sections be reverted back to suburban neighborhood zoning. So that is, that is their underlying of zoning at the moment. I have a motion ready to, that will say, motion to amend the proposed comprehensive land use plan. To remove civic campuses, Brook Run Park and water work areas. From pages one oh six to one eleven, deleting all select sections and revert that map back to commercial areas. So Madam Mayor, I agree wholeheartedly that I think that civic campuses needs to change. And I would also revert Brook Run and Water Works because there's no need to have those sections. They're governmentally owned. And anything that happens to those, if reverted or sold, should go back to the zoning for commercial neighborhood.
Right. I mean, I don't. I. I just think, I kind of like the idea of classifying all these civic uses as one. I like that strategy. I just don't. I, I think it's all or nothing.
But right now, if we were to do this and the JCC were to decide to put up zoning, they would have a leg up. In the zoning compared to every other nonprofit or religious organization. And I think that's an inappropriate action on our part today.
Does this affect the zoning? Isn't this just how we would like to see things go? I don't see, I don't see this black and white.
Well, it's. There's, John and I are saying the sort of different things. I'm saying that you have to treat all these properties the same.
Which is like putting little dots all over the.
That's okay, because you cannot have one fifty acre parcel, which is what the JCC is, because Georgia State is. Lot bigger than that, but it's also different and not. Treat the other large properties owned with similar entities the same, in my opinion. I'm one seventh. I'm one seventh, but we can also just revert them back to suburban. Which is what they were, which is just, they're all, they're, they're underlying zoning for all these properties is R one hundred anyway. So if they wanted to come in and do something different. They would still have to go through the rezoning process. Nothing says this, that they, they don't have to do that, right, Richard? But you have to come up and answer the question. You can't. Um.
Yes, that's correct.
Right. So they still would have, it doesn't waive the rezoning process.
This doesn't change anybody's land use rights. That will happen when we do the.
That could happen.
Right.
Right. So, um, I'm okay with either reverting them back to R one hundred. And not talking about them in this plan, uh, because I do kind of think the Water Works and Brook Run are strange in here. I think those are strange fits because we can do.
They're in our city.
But so is Purnishul and so is the Nature Center. I mean, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, but also, we're not gonna do. I've got two and a half years left. We're not gonna develop, redevelop Brook Run. Well, I'm mayor and I can't see anybody else doing it in the future. And if we want to put a coffee shop in Brook Run tomorrow, we can. Because we're allowed to. We don't, I mean, it's, it's our property.
I guess then there's nothing wrong with leaving him in the plan.
Well. Yes, but that's right. We can't, we can't, we have to follow the stream rules.
We're following our public rules. Right now, the ZBA has a hearing in Brook Run Park for a stream buffer variance on city-owned property.
Right.
We're arguing a lot over something that really isn't gonna change. So I think we should just agree, agree on something for this and move on.
Right.
Whether we have a revert or lump it all together, either approach is fine.
Right. Do you want just to revert, just to, if you don't want the little dots? Then I think we just take the civic campus section out. That's, those are our choices. And my, those are, those are what I'm comfortable with.
Uh, we're trying to merge and simplify and get rid of a million zoning qualifications and make it simpler. Not harder, right? So I, I've, I've looked at code, I've looked at cities that have form-based code and it's really simple and clear to look up. Little town called Brevard, North Carolina, Billy Parish used to live here, worked for DCA. They, they have it and it's so simple to read. If you want to go get your little, build a cabin there, you know what to do. So it's for future.
It's, but, but not. This isn't code. This is. Character area and. How, again, how do we justify having, I'm beating this and I'm done. We, there's two choices and we'll choose when we come to vote.
Um, just, just also just timing about the property owner. I, I want to be agnostic to understanding who the property owners are currently. And it's the future vision of that area if it were to be opened up and if they were to be.
That's not even what this one says, though.
Okay, so let's think about the former Avon headquarters. Adjacent to Cotillion on the two eighty-five. If that were to revert. There are opportunities there. So I just, if it were just to go back to.
But that, that's a rezoning. I mean, that's.
But could we by default have it ready to go?
No. I don't think so. I don't think so.
No.
To promote.
You're not, you're, you're way off. Right, you're, right, you're digging in. Okay. All right. On suburban, does anybody have anything else?
Get back to the beginning, suburban?
Well, suburban, that's the one we were still on.
We were.
Well, we were, we were, we kind of jumped into the civic because the. Use. Anyway. Anything? Anybody in this? No, okay. Next is perimeter.
Oh, wait, I, I do have, they do, it does standard U D O to offer relief for house owners. Whose entire front yard or rear yard is rendered unbuildable. I don't understand if we can offer relief as a.
Well, can somebody answer her question?
Relief means money. I think.
Got a question for staff.
Yeah. Yeah, can we offer relief for house owners if there's areas are under flood zones?
We, we can offer some, um, but if we're held by the state and what they will allow.
Is it wise to put it in the code?
And it's.
It, it depends on who you are.
Councilman Lottbacher thinks it's money. Is it money? Offer relief for house owners whose entire front yard or rear yard is rendered unbuildable, un, unbuildable under the current stream buffer regulations? Is it funding or is it?
Yeah, I don't think it's funding.
Maybe you don't have to go into the ZBA if you want to go and build a deck in your backyard or extend a porch or something.
Right.
Because there's a lot, that's mostly what ZBA hits.
Right.
Again, I just don't think that we're. Going to offer that. Necessarily. I would take that out.
Okay. So I'm, I'm gonna, will you make a note so when we come back and then we come back to that? I know you have a note. Okay, perimeter.
Sorry, I do have one more question on suburban. Um. Because it projects initiatives to look at doing the accessory dwelling units. Um, and putting that in the, in the U D O. Um, somebody in public commented asked about, you know, the adult children, whatever, whatnot. Is that something that we need to put as appropriate or appropriate considerations or will that just be covered off by the U D O?
I think the committee wanted, recommended that the study be completed first.
Okay, perfect.
In the work plan. And that is a great, actually, answer for all kinds of. Multi-generational living. Okay, anybody else with suburban?
That, that's something that will be addressed in the code.
Right, right. It's in the work plan. All right, perimeter. This is the perimeter core area. All right. I would like to move. Multi-unit. And. Senior assistant living and I'll come back to the why on that one. Um, I'm on page eighty-three. Um, multi-unit, mixed use. Um, and. Uh, to appropriate with considerations.
That's fine.
And then.
Madam Mayor, speaking to you, what about regional commercial? Regional commercial?
Regional commercial? Is that like the mall?
Should that not also come in front of us for future regional commercial development? Not come in front of us for a slop or for consideration, also in yellow.
So you gotta talk a little louder. Sorry, John.
I agreed wholeheartedly with what you've already said, but I would also like to add regional commercial into yellow with uh.
Okay.
Appropriate with considerations.
Okay.
That's fine.
What, can, someone want to define regional commercial? I mean, I can look at, I didn't print the whole thing. Just print it. Oh, I can.
It's already there, but if you want to put another one there, I think it should come in front of us.
Right. So uh, for reference, regional commercial is defined as larger scaled retail with a customer base that extends beyond the Dunwoody area. Or multi-story offices that are not providing local services. Okay, I, I think that that should be yellow too.
That's fine.
Um. And then I know that. Some of the housing types in the core perimeter that are red. Are because we don't think that they make sense financially. I know I use this as an example all the time, but the million dollar townhomes that face a Chick-fil-A and Avalon. Nobody probably thought that was possible fifteen years ago and so, or maybe they did. But it feels like to me, so two things. One is that we know that just because it's in red doesn't mean a developer can't ask. The second thing we know is that twenty years is a long time. Um. It doesn't totally ma- matter to me. I think small lot residential could be yellow. Um, if someone was doing a massive redevelopment, they could do a mixture of housing types. That's what I would hope. And so the greatest potential for redevelopment we have. In twenty twenty-five is in the perimeter of the core and the transition. And so maybe someone will come in and they'll knock an office building down and they'll put some multi-unit housing. They'll put some townhomes and maybe we'll get ten small, single family homes as part of a development. Maybe not. Maybe so. And so. I'd like to see small lot move up. I would put it in green.
Would, would that, the, the scenario you just gave, wouldn't that fall under a, like a mixed use?
I always think a mixed use is dense, but I mean, it could be.
I, I always thought it as, you maybe you've got some.
It's fine. That's, that's not one that.
I don't have a strong opinion on that change.
Just that. And then. But, but, because I do think there's value in the diverse how, like when somebody comes in and puts housing, that there's some value in diverse stock. Um. And so that, that to me would be. A reason to move it. No small lot. I don't think if I was gonna do lots. Okay. Just to move it, by putting it in red, you're sending a message like none. Go ahead. Um, just a clarification on mixed use. So um, the way that it is defined as of right now in the draft is mixed use. As one of the land uses is vertical mixed use. Right. By, by the nature of the stock plate, you can have any of this green as part of a horizontal mixed use project and that's totally fine. So the mixed use is really vertical. Right. As by this definition. That's what I thought. Okay. So. I would move small lot. To yellow as well unless anybody really cares. Go ahead. That's fine.
So the message is that because of the cost prohibitive of the land itself. If we end up building that kind of product development, developer comes in. Can, can, the measurement is, can our firefighters buy that home? And our educators buy that home? I believe that will be at least a two to three million dollar home if that was built in the perimeter today.
But you don't know.
It, it go up to Eltona and outside their city center and that's what those market rate homes are selling for in their city center. So. I, I would say stick to red because the message we're sending is, okay, come in with your seven figure. And come, come out from California, New York and spend your money and buy something really big here.
All right, anybody else on the land use stuff for perimeter? On the core, any other changes? I can leave small lot in red. It doesn't really matter. Um. So. On the projects and initiatives. Um, the first one, the PCID Implement Transit Oriented Development and Recommendations from the Dunwoody Marta two point O Centering the Edge Plan. I don't like that plan. And um, I thi- I think I'd rather have us use language like work with PCID. Um, on redevelopment of the Marta Station area or something. Um. I'm not a fan of Marta's current plan. Um, I think we can do better. Actually, I know we can do better. Yeah, so we need to fix that in the work plan as well. But I, I just. I, I think that's awfully specific for something that council, I don't even know that y'all have seen it. I saw, I mean, some of us went to the open house. That's the only time we've seen it, right? Is that correct? You haven't seen it. So I think that's the only time we saw it was at the open house. And so I, I'd like to change that.
To me, it wasn't even really well defined at the open house.
Right, it wa- well, and what.
I don't know. I don't know.
They don't really know. And that's why it feels very specific. So just.
Omit.
Work with Marta. Go ahead.
Yeah, that, because it's Marta and Marta owns all that land.
Right.
They can do whatever they want.
I understand, but they'll ask my, they'll ask the city's opinion at least, or we can work with them to come up with something better. Also, they shouldn't do us like anytime soon because we have lots of development already around the Marta Station. So to be clear, I also think that, I think they should invest in the communities where it can make a difference, which is not what we're talking about right now. All right, transition.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Let me circle back. Um, I still have grave concerns in approving the comprehensive land use plan without already having our unified development ordinance, our U D O in place to know the rules for future development. But I understand this document needs to be, you know, pushed forward. So we're, we're working towards that goal.
Oh.
Our main, my other real concern is that we don't, in the U D O that may come in front of us, in other municipalities, they scraped all prior zoning decisions on the books. And I would hate to see that proposed here in the future as that would be a slap in the face to many of the residents who've worked on these protections. Think of all the zoning. If you were to pull up the zoning rights already happening in perimeter center, the projects that have gone for the last twenty years, U D O in Sandy Springs scraped every single one of their decisions and started out fresh. And I have grave concerns though that the U D O, uh, that may happen here. So I'm concerned on what we're doing and the future implementation of it. And I just think we need to be really careful about moving forward on some of these things. I, I have concerns. Richard, go ahead. What's your thoughts?
So a- again, we've talked about the state, uh, mandates us to do the comprehensive plan every five years. That's what we're doing. We do not have to do the L D O. We have begged you all to do the L D O. They do not have to be together. In fact, it works better if we set a vision and then you all get to approve the U D L, U D O.
Later.
In all its glory.
Right.
You, it comes to you for several public hearings.
Right.
Uh, I just don't want to be a Sandy Springs. I don't want to be, I want to be different. We are Dunwoody and I think we've worked hard to have the community that we have and I want to fight to keep it the way we, that we might be. So thank you.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. Perimeter core. No, perimeter transition.
Right.
Um. Move mixed use to yellow just because of the density. Um.
Move senior as well?
Yeah, move senior as well. Because I think when we, yes, just that's a yes.
And then if you read that section, we should also look at, um, change multi-unit considerations in yellow to allow city council to approve the appropriateness of each project based on its merits and it's a special land use permit. If you look at it now, it's a completely different reason, but it should be the multi-unit, the senior assisted living, mixed use should all be under the same considerations.
Right.
Okay.
And I have that on my big picture notes to change everywhere it says review requires additional review process or develop a additional review process to have it be a slot. I think that that's what this community is comfortable with. It's what I'm com- I think it's a defined process that the public understands. And so I've-
So basically you're just saying like, like, obviously the additional review process was in fact a, a, a slot for the most part because it has to be. So you're just saying you want that spelled out defined versus additional review process, which is a slot. So you just want the word slot instead of additional review.
I wanted to find it. I think it's important for people to understand that in the state of Georgia now, there are all kinds of rules related to rezoning residential property, like R one hundred to other property. And, and so none of it would ever be a secret, like indicator, which is a lot smaller than us. When they went through this process and they did some rezonings ahead of time, it was, um, eighteen thousand dollars worth of signs and they're a lot smaller than us. So the state has made sure, I mean, not that we would keep it a secret, but, um, okay, Dunwoody Village. And let, oh, was anybody have anything else on core perimeter? Okay. Dunwoody Village. So this plan, um, we have a Dunwoody Village plan. And for the most part, this lines up, I think, with the plan. I, I think I'd like to move senior assisted living down to appropriate with considerations. Go ahead.
Yeah, and we, you men, mirror the zoning that T S W did on it.
On the village plan.
Um, senior housing is allowed.
Right, I saw that.
On the current zone. So that-
I did, but so the thing with age housing is, is that there's multiple types. And some types might be a better fit than others, um, in terms of energizing an area. So I just think it's probably neat, is more nuanced than we were thinking about when we approved that plan.
Yeah, and that'll come in the code when we-
Right, I know.
Defer that.
Right, but I still want to move it down for now in case somebody's watching, a developer was waiting or something.
Madam Mayor, should we also move mixed use from the Dunwoody Village Core down into the yellow?
Yes. Mixed use to the, uh, okay. Oh, okay. Go ahead.
So, but currently mixed use is, is in the zoning for that area already, right?
But it, if it's vertical, we can't, we don't even allow heights very high in the village.
Up to four, well, the, the overlay allows up to four stories in the very middle of it.
But that doesn't feel very vertical to me in twenty twenty-five. Does it feel very vertical?
The village, it feels pretty-
Yeah, I guess, but it doesn't feel, anyway, I'm moving mixed use down to-
I, I'm, I'm just pointing out that-
No, I know.
This, i- if this is then reflected in the U D O, we'll make it more restrictive than the current overlay.
Yes.
That's the observation.
We'll fix it. All right, the transition. Um. On Dunwoody Village, anybody have changes?
No, senior for me, I'd like to move the senior down.
Okay. Anybody else?
But you mean by down to yellow?
Yeah, yeah.
Yellow with, uh, considerations, appropriate with considerations.
Okay. Now Georgetown West. I think mixed use has to go down to yellow.
As well as senior.
Oh, and senior, we're kind of doing that as, to be fair. It is such a large area of lots of rede-, that's another area redevelopment might happen. Oh, wait, no. Wait a minute.
There's also a senior west transitional, Madam Mayor, so you may be looking at one versus the other.
Yeah, that's why I'm confused. All right, so the, the Georgetown West transition. Yeah, just we'll move senior just to everything, but the, um, when we look at the U D O, I'd like us to take a close look at like buffers and neighborhoods. I, I think that's what we're gonna do, but, um, there. Okay, go ahead.
Georgetown has a small area plan.
Oh, coming, the smaller, coming, small area plan, so yeah.
Area in a lot more detail in your future.
So, wait a minute, so-
We've lost Quorum there.
So I've lost Quorum. I'm really sorry, which, which we could probably already, you could, no, it's, Quorum is four physically here.
Told me we gotta take a break.
We have to take a break, which actually I could use a break. So we're gonna be back in five minutes. Sorry, oh, I, what do I have to do though? I think I have to share and I think I have to recess for five minutes, but he left. This is very rare for us to not have four people here. Um, all right, we'll be back in five minutes. We're recessing. Sorry, Joe did not know that. Uh. Georgetown, oh wait, well, we're starting. Is Richard here? I can't see. Okay, we're starting. Someone take notes. Um, Georgetown East. Um.
Order is what?
What? No, I mean, we just finished Georgetown West, the transition. At page ninety-four, I'm totally going in order of the pages. I'm going, we're on page ninety-four. We're going in order of the pages. Um, so on ninety-five is the chart. Um.
Oh, we lost Stacy.
We're back. Okay. Um.
And Georgetown East, Madam Mayor, I have senior assisted living and multi-unit that need to be converted down.
Yes, but, yes. And then on, I pointed this out, Richard, did y'all make the change about on the description of the area where it says most of the area consists of First Baptist Church is not accurate because the apartment complex is twice its size.
We'll look at it and make the change.
Okay, please. And then, um. All right, so John's changes were seniors and multi-unit down to yellow. Is that okay?
So, so we're saying that what is there today is yellow because we're saying that's-
Yes, and I actually think that we should, it's a hundred acres. I think we should, we have a vested interest in how it's redeveloped. If it's ever redeveloped. I think we have a vested interest in that. All right, Winners Chapel is page ninety-six, starts at ninety-six, goes to ninety, uh, seven on this section. Um. John, you want to say?
Sure, I'm happy to jump in.
But you gotta talk louder.
For Winners Chapel, I'd like to change multi-unit, senior assisted living and mixed use down to yellow. Iterations.
Yes. Anybody object? Hearing none. Keep going. Winners Chapel transition.
I only have senior level, senior assisted loving moving down.
Okay. That's fine. Um. Jet Ferry.
For Jet Ferry, I have senior assisted living, mixed use and medium commercial moving down, appropriate with consideration.
That's fine. That's fine. Anybody have objections on that one? You have to have, we don't get to tell utilities what they get to do. I know you know that by now. Okay, Ashford. All right.
To be, to be consistent, we would move senior and assisted living.
Right.
Down.
To yellow.
And honestly, to be consistent, we would leave multi-unit and mixed use as yellow.
Right.
I'd like to make a, a motion to move mixed use and multi-unit from yellow appropriate to red inappropriate.
Well, we're not on the motions yet, but, um, discussion.
I disagree.
What?
I disagree. I think that it could be appropriate.
I, yeah, I, I'm with Catherine. I think there are certain, i- if the, the right project came in at the right density with the right design, it could be considered for here, I think. I'm, I'm looking at the Dunwoody Village. It's yellow right now as well in the core, so. I'm fine with yellow.
I agree with, uh, Rob, Catherine, Joe, that it's, should be appropriate with considerations, especially since there's a, there's, it's already existing there. So you just have to make sure that, I mean, that's why we're doing, that's why it requires a slot.
And I think that on this one, oh, it's on the same page. Wait, sorry. Should have put it in a notebook and not stapled it. So we are, uh, look, so right now it could be five stories because O and I can be five stories. And so on this plan, we are saying that the appropriate intensity is two to four stories. Um.
That matches the Brighton Gardens next to it. That matches the-
Ashford.
The, um, the, the apartments to the south of it, that's kind of in line with the, the height of the residential that's already there.
Okay. All right.
And the office building that it's in, it's down in a valley, but it's got, I think, five stories was.
Yeah.
The one to the, to northern most parcel.
Okay, well, we'll vote on all these. Peachtree Boulevard.
I have moving multi-unit, senior assisted living and mixed use to yellow.
Right, and I, I know we're doing the Georgetown plan, but I think we probably need a Peachtree Boulevard, Winter's Chapel plan. I know we've talked about it a little bit. But given our financial situation maybe is better than we thought it was, that we maybe want to consider doing a plan for that area as well. Is that something we could do?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if I could say something on that, I've had conversations with one of the council members in Peachtree Corners. They're very interested in doing that as well, so it might be a multi-jurisdictional thing. We might have Peachtree Corners participating in that as well.
Does it have something? Okay. Okay, there's something in the work plan. Right, because I don't, I don't think we have a good handle on what the potential is even over there, what it could be, and I think this is awfully theoretical. And so I think that if it's in the work plan or if it's not partnering with Peachtree Corners and doing a plan for that whole area is probably a necessary step.
It says Winter's Chapel, that's LU-ten in the land use work program, but we could extend that to.
Right, to Peachtree Industrial. It's Peachtree Industrial and Dunwoody, just in case anyone doesn't know that. Okay. So we're back to Civic Campus. Which I think we have a dilemma here. I think we either take it all out and we just leave it as R-one-hundred, which I'm okay with. Or we add in all the civic properties.
I would recommend taking them all out and just reverting back.
Okay.
If that's the direction y'all want to go.
Yes.
Rather than making it this quasi-character area map.
Right. Okay.
If I could ask a question on that, then. With, and this is with the current coding, because like all the swim tennis clubs, the JCC is, they're all R-one-hundred, but they're neighborhood recreation club. So, for example. You know, the JCC operates a cafe, which is not allowed in R-one-hundred, but is that allowed in the neighborhood recreational clubs? I don't want to keep them somewhere where they're actually not going according to code.
Yeah, surely they are not allowed.
Okay, well.
So that would be something we would look at.
What? That's not allowed for the JCC? That's what you're saying? That's what you're saying, Stacy?
Well, no, my question is, they, they operate a cafe and a snack bar at the pool, but they're R-one-hundred.
You don't want them to be under R-one-hundred.
Because clearly they're violating our code right now, so, but I didn't know if then maybe when we look at UDO, if we look at neighborhood or recreation clubs, like differently to. Sorry. There's a reason why I'm not there tonight. You guys would all be going insane if you heard how much coffee I was doing. But you see, you see my, my point with.
Richard, is that something we should and can address during the UDO? You cut, you see, whatever.
Yes, it'll, it'll be difficult with it being R-one-hundred.
Because we have to do all that.
So we have to change the underlying zoning.
For each parcel.
Yeah, so.
I think we consider putting civic campuses all over where they currently are.
Right.
The zoning for those campuses.
That would make the code writing much simpler.
So go back to the civic campus idea, but like First Baptist has a coffee shop now and Dunwoody met them, first the Catholic Church has the fish fry. And bingo, so I think if we're gonna do that, then we have to go back to making them all civic campuses. Okay, so that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna go back and make them all.
I'm okay with that. John had.
Go ahead, John.
I don't know if you have a thought on that, but you initially had a different.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? All right. As far as the cashiers and the snack bars, that's in every swim tennis. Every swim tennis has that now. It's a non-conforming use that's been in place for many years. Every single one of them has that. As far as the the campuses, my thing is, is that if we, there's some zoning in there that reverts it back, they're allowed to build, they're allowed to do things in it. I want to read that again and go through it and make sure that everybody is okay with what we are allowing these organizations to do, and I still think it's inappropriate to highlight the JCC as special allowance compared to every other nonprofit in the city.
Right, well, that's why I said that it's all or nothing.
Yeah, the discussion, yeah, sorry.
No, go ahead.
The discussion is whether to lump everything into civic campus or to just revert it all to R-one-hundred. So they would all be together in a big batch of civic campus or just defaulting to low, low-density residential.
The underlying zone, all of that is residential right now, but have special allowances to, to do these, provide these services at these specific places.
I don't think that they have, if they just started six months ago, I don't think they have a special allowance.
Well, it says here on page one oh seven, implementation, update the UDO to establish the guidance to do this. But once we define this new classification called civic campuses, then during the UDO process, we define.
The question also becomes, we've got this stoplight chart. Does everything fall under yellow in that case then? Because except for.
I didn't even see this.
Residential.
And my issue was the stoplight. If you're allowing, let's say, the JC to put up senior assisted living, that's green right now.
Right.
If that's appropriate, are you gonna allow that to every other nonprofit in the organ, in the city?
No, I don't disagree with what you're saying. That's why I said it's kind of all or nothing, but I also think that with potential transitions in the school system, we might, we certainly probably don't want anything that we don't have to have as green listed as green for those properties, probably.
Well, all of those properties for the schools are all commercial, they're all residential.
They're R-one-hundred.
They're R-one-hundred.
Those are J, and so are the big churches. They're all R-one-hundred.
So is the solution, it would expand civic campuses to include everything and move anything that's currently green into yellow, just to make sure we're covered in case there's a change in the future?
As well as large lot residential?
Yeah, I mean, and, and most in some of the.
Yeah.
Excuse me, things that are red.
Move, move everything in green to yellow. Okay, I got that one. And lump all of the places of worship into civics campuses as well.
Hello, okay, just sorry, but what I thought. But what I thought Alison say was, don't do the scattershot and make.
Right.
Keep everything R-one-hundred.
Right, but then you raised that question.
Yeah.
I don't think we can do that. I don't think we want to zone to an inadequate zone.
So if, if I may interject with, with a question to you all, and considering this, so your comprehensive plan, this is the, the high-level twenty-year outlook, right? So if you think about these civic parcels, the comp plan's roles is say, hey, this is what we want it to be in twenty years. So if you want to pull those all out and provide specific future development direction for those, then I think it makes sense to do the scattershot. If it's really more about this very fine-tuned zoning question, I do think that makes more sense to deal with through the UDO. So it's, it's more what, what your intent, what is your intent tonight on what you want to see in these areas in the future?
Richard, I.
Allow kiosks that sell snacks?
But they're already there. That's the, that's the question that Stacy, Councilwoman Harris raised. So knowing that there are, so there's like, this is a small potato thing. Big picture, I would want them to have to go through any rezoning process if they wanted to change their use. I'm one of seven. I don't know if other people agree with me. But if they came in and they said, you know, we don't want to be a church anymore, we want to do X, Y, Z, they should have to go through the rezoning process. That's what I think. And so, but now that we've raised this issue of current behavior, I guess for lack of a better word, then we have to probably address it in the UDO. But what's the best way then to be prepared to address it in the UDO? Is it to lump them all as civic campuses? Or just to use language in the UDO that says any place of worship, school, whatever. Schools can, right now can do whatever they want because they're local governments and they can do whatever they want. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I have a question for Richard because that relates to this. You know, personally, I've never felt that it was appropriate to have these uses categorized as R-one-hundred because that's not an R-one-hundred use. I like, I like classifying it separately. My question is, when we do the UDO, is it possible to have it, if, if these should, properties should ever, and whatever the appropriate way to do it, change ownership, change from their current use, that it reverts to R-one-hundred? Is that something to do, that we can do, or is it an automatic revert to R-one-hundred? That way we don't have to worry about a property that's currently a civic use being sold to a developer and something that we don't want going there?
I don't believe you can set it up so that properties automatically revert. I'll ask the attorney on that one.
I don't know that I know the answer, but what I would say is you can't go, you can't take something backwards that's already vested, and so I want to be very careful about thinking this is a zoning backwards when we're doing this land use map. I would be very cautious about that.
So. That's where my. I just kind of have, I want to point out that this is a plan. It's, it's not as, it's not a zoning map. It's a character area. So, so whether we call the JCC a civic campus or whether we call All Saints a civic campus, it's still R-one-hundred housing. So it, so I guess really the point is, do we, do we want who's? I mean, do we want to call it, we can call these civic campuses, but in fact, it, it wouldn't change their underlying zoning, which is R-one-hundred, correct? Because that's the UDO. So this is just a plan. This is not zoning. So how do we, what, and so unless we want to say tonight, well, we're gonna change all of these places and we don't want them to be R-one-hundred, but that's not what we're talking about tonight. We're talking about the plan. So. How do we want it treated, but it still doesn't change their underlying zoning and won't?
Right.
It's the future. It's whatever's changed in, in the future. We're gonna draft this for the future. This is why we're interested in all these civic campuses in one category.
I'm kind of circling back around into striking this because all of these civic campuses are so different in their location and where they are that what we might envision should, for some reason, they ever go away, I think will be vastly different depending on where they are.
That's why everything's moving to yellow.
Yeah.
I think we managed to tangle two different things, land use and zoning. Or land use and permitted uses, really. So I come back to the question I asked, and then we are moving on. Which is, is if we intend to make uses that are happening at these civic campuses permissible in the UDO. What do we need to do tonight? What is the E, if, if we intend to, to do that? What do, do we need to lump them all together? Do we just take out the civic campus and deal with it down the road? It's all we're asking for. I'm just asking for some guidance.
So this is my opinion. The civic campuses that JCC versus Georgia State.
Right.
That's the civic campus. All those little schools, we can amend those when we do the code. So I would leave it as is.
So I'm just gonna strike the civic campuses then, because you have a church that is as big as the JCC. They're both fifty-two acres, actually identical. So we either gotta be more inclusive. I mean, I don't know, I don't know another way to do it, because while it's not, this is, I get it, anyway.
But the First Baptist piece is on the highway. It's, it's not the size of it, it's where it's located. That drives those decisions.
I think we strike this section, which was where we were to begin with, and that was the recommendation twenty minutes ago. Sorry, guys. All right, we're gonna strike this section. Thank you.
Are we gonna vote on that? Because I just.
No, we haven't voted on anything yet.
I know, but you're saying we're gonna strike it.
Well, I mean, that's gonna, that's what my motion's going to be, or John's motion, or somebody's motion is gonna be, but we're not gonna solve this tonight. I don't think. All right, and last, in this part, Brook Run Park. Which doesn't have a tape. Oh, it does have a table. All right, we need to be moving faster, but can you give me a two-minute answer why Brook Run Park is in here and why the Nature Center, Parnishal Park Two Bridges Park is not?
Sure, so we had a big discussion about this in the steering committee, and our steering committee felt that Brook Run Park was a special enough place that it should be called out as something of its own nature. So basically, its size and importance in Dunwoody was the main reason for pulling it out.
Okay. John?
I disagree wholeheartedly. I don't understand why we're.
You gotta talk louder, sorry.
I don't know why we're delineating one over the other. Right now, what's green is green, what's yellow, we can do anyway. And in reality, we could do what's in red as well if we wanted to, not that we ever want to do any of those issues. I just think that's city property. There's no reason, the underlying zoning is R-one-hundred. Leave it alone. If we make changes, then we have to deal with it. If we sell off a piece of property, they have to come back and rezone it for whatever it is. I don't think it's appropriate to have it in as a separate entity, because we're, again, we're not being fair to the other parks.
So the other thing I would note was that we initially talked about civic campus being pulled out, then they're like, well, what about Brook Run? What about Waterworks? So I think if we're gonna strike civic campus, to be consistent, it makes sense to also strike Brook Run Park and Waterworks.
Didn't even, I didn't print Waterworks.
Good, could I just quickly on the parks in general? Do we just create a parks classification? Do we create a government-owned property classification then?
I, my thought is, this is kind of the plan envisioning for the future. And I, I mean, do, do we really need to have it?
Right, they're gonna be parks.
Yeah, I want it. I don't, I, I just, I don't know that it's that important, but.
The, the idea of, why don't we have a zoning that's just called public park?
Because.
And then. R-one-hundred then.
I mean, we don't want to change R-one-hundred like that. I mean, right now, because, no, I know, but it's like a whole thing with the state.
Then you're gonna have gaps, you know, you're gonna miss something. You're gonna have gap where the Waterworks is, gap where the Brook Run is, gap where the college is.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do that. I think we need to just leave it be. And because our vision, I mean, I don't know about y'all's, but my vision of Brook Run Park is that twenty years from, twenty years from now, it's still gonna be a park. And so that's, and the same thing is true, the, the Waterworks is the only water supply for DeKalb County, so it's gonna be the Waterworks. So. Maybe, but yeah, and, and the thing is, is that if we want to put a coffee shop, to John's point, at Brook Run, we can put a coffee shop at Brook Run. We don't even need to change anything. All right, so to be consistent, we'll have a motion to strike all three of those character areas.
Yes, we do strike that. There's some great verbiage, though, about the projects and initiatives and background and so on. I'd like to retain all this hard work that people did.
Yeah.
Aside from the, you know, the visualization of the appropriate intensity or the stoplight, so.
Absolutely.
So just for clarification, all of these would get struck, struck out and put back into suburban neighborhoods.
Yes.
So what we would do is we would then take the appropriate projects and all that verbiage would then get put into the suburban neighborhood section.
Okay. That works for me, anyway. Okay. I had two big picture things to Joe's point. Well, maybe not so big picture. Are we finished with the character areas? Okay, we'll come back and vote on all that in a second. One is that we have a lot of references in here to first-floor retail. And on a national level, for the most part, this is not working the way people thought it was going to, and I were, I, I'd like us to come up with a diff, like activate the first floor or something. First floor must be activated, because when we, we see all over metro Atlanta, where, where a a community, a city, a county has said you have to activate the first floor. So you see storage facilities with empty first floors, and you see the apartment complex down on the other side of four hundred in Sandy Springs, where the retail sits empty, because you need a lot of density and walkable stuff, and it's, it's not universally, universally applicable.
Right. So I believe the terminology we tried to use was retail ready first floors, which is a little bit different. It sounds like it's mincing words, but it is talking about, you know, how do you create dimensions that could work for both residential or commercial? So retail rate is slightly different. Um, I would advise against saying active, activate with uses. If I were to come in and want to just put residential, but well, that's active. There's people in there. So I think it it opens you all up to be more vague in the interpretation that you're going to get from folks. So I would encourage a little more specific.
So the problem is, is that if someone wants to rebuild, say, an apartment complex on Winter's Chapel, where all they're doing is rebuilding an apartment complex on Winter's Chapel, and that's all that's appropriate for that space. We don't need that. I mean, in a perfect world, it would be all the things that you would have first floor retail. But across the country, this is not working, except in certain settings. Like it works in perimeter. Because there's hundreds of people that live on top of all the retail spaces. But not only that, it's a destination for other people. It works sort of in Swanee because the city center is right there. It doesn't work on Abernathy. It it doesn't work lots of other places, you know? And so I don't know exactly what the words are that we should use, but I don't want to saddle a future city government with empty retail spaces that they build because they want the project approved.
And I would agree with that. I think that's smart. You don't want to do that.
Right.
Um, now my, if I'm tracking all the changes, I think in most of these cases, multi-unit and mixed use have all gone down together, right? So if I'm a developer and mixed use isn't going to be viable, and I'm not going to get a retail tenant, I'm not building that, right? So I think that if you give folks the option of which one they want to pursue, and they're both in yellow, they're going to come to you with what's going to be viable. And I don't, I
You're right. I didn't think about that. You're right.
Well, listen, um, from a multi-unit developer, isn't it a loss for them to add retail?
In this current market, yes.
It's because it's not working.
So their 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 financial incentive is to just purely build a multi-unit and not to have any retail there.
Correct.
Uh, man, Amir, could we go back to the Waterworks just for one moment? Under, I just, it wasn't the green, ever red, but I had something that was under initiatives. Something I've been exploring for my, it says right now on the projects and initiatives on page one eleven. Um, says explore opportunities for passive recreation access. And now I'm really noodling in the words, but we're trying to get a pocket park for the kids to play at on Winter's Chapel. So I don't know if that's passive or not. We're trying to, trying to make it so that they have a splash pad and a place for playground, you know, for a couple of acres there if DeKalb County agrees to that in the Waterworks area. And so I'd like to add that somewhere where we talk about, it's, it's, it's a pat, it's, you know, I don't want to say the word active recreation because then people think it's going to be a ball field, but
Maybe you can remove the word passive.
Could we remove the word passive?
Sure.
Thanks. And then, um, just, you know, you go always ask, right? I'm just a dreamer. Um, Mr. Winston mentioned it to me over the weekend as we drove, we carpooled to go to yoga on Saturday. It's great. We did, you need your yoga. It's great. You do a little meditation. Anyway, um, second one is, apparently twenty years ago, you just asked. They had walking paths that were available along the Waterworks. People could access, they put the fences up. So could we just have that to the ask? Say, add walking paths along the interior of the Waterworks.
Guaranteed that that one would happen because of the legal changes.
Show me in writing, let's just ask. Could we aspire to just asking that? Mr. Winston, I just asked about walking paths in the winter. All right.
All right. Okay. Now we have to, it's, does anybody else have things that need to be changed?
I wanted to just, I've got, I've got transportation and hitting on a community work program, a couple of things.
Okay, go ahead. Are these things that need to be motions to change?
Let's just have a conversation here and see what happens. So I I, you know, Google search, I mean, I go, you know, do search for the term transportation is all over the place. I know we're going to have a separate update on our transportation plan, but really, what is the vision, goal, aim? I think that these comprehensive plans are supposed to be visionary, goal, aim. And I don't really see in transportation, a statement about what is the vision, goal, aim for transportation in this plan. I don't see any kind of verbiage about that at all. And it says, you know, it's, are we just saying about traffic mitigation? But I I'd like to go ahead and say articulate our goal to encourage and promote mode share shift from single occupancy motor vehicles. A two to four percent shift will dramatically have an impact on reducing traffic congestion. Using technologies such as placer A I to understand trip origin and destinations for planning and building out our multimodal transportation system. And then in twenty nineteen, it ran the goal, a goal of creating a city where every child should be able to safely walk or ride their bike safely to school. Is that something we could all agree on and articulate and put in in our visionary plan? So those are the things I just want to talk about because when you look at the community assessment inside in three dot one, it states address traffic, traffic congestion, and it has some tactical things. I'm trying to elevate this conversation to say, what are our aims here and desires and vision? So a little more visionary verbiage is what I was considering.
So if I, if I might make one note, um, the way that we approach transportation this plan was to try to do it by area. So, you know, from what we've heard and from the community is transportation looks different in perimeter than it does in, say, Jet Ferry, suburban neighborhoods. So we did try to kind of put that vision statement for transportation based off of those focal areas, but correct, there is no overall, this is our one vision for transportation in Dunwoody.
Um, I just, then the other one I had, just a generic one was not missing was, um, uh, I got, I have two other ones. Um, how do we affect change? How do we promote these things to happen? Because we've had these master plans that just sit in dust, and it's kind of implied, but I'd like to add somewhere where we say encourage our development authority and urban renewal authority, or any other authorities that we have to be proactive in seeking opportunities for land acquisition, for redevelopment, promoting missing many how, missing middle housing and economic growth. Because because the how is not in this plan. So we don't have anything about the how here at all. And let's encourage our our authorities to be proactive instead of just sitting back there and, okay, we're going to give a tax, tax abatement. So any, any thoughts about that one?
So I think um, I'm not sure that's part of a comp plan. I think that what I would want to make sure we've said in this plan is that we talk about these different housing types and that we want, um, we want to make sure that when a developer picks up this plan, that they understand that what we're looking for in terms of residential property is stuff we don't already have. And I, I think that's how we get what you're talking about. I think it's a signal to the property owners that this is what we expect. I think that that's part of it. I don't know that it's as clear as, um, you know, I think that's the way to do it. I think that, that you could, I mean, if council agrees, you could make that an action item. I mean, you could, work item.
Put that in a work item.
Or just investigate.
Work with our development authorities to promote, um, opportunities.
Right. Except that we don't necessarily encourage our development authority. They can't do ownership housing. And so, but I think we could make as a work item or a something about, um, under initiatives or projects or just updating, you know, how we message what housing we're missing. You know, if we're going to have new housing developments proposed, what does that look like?
In the short-term work program, under economic development, we could list
Yes, that's perfect. All right.
Um, yeah, one, a couple more things. So pu- pu- pollution. Pollution is mentioned three times in the document. It's underwater quality monitoring, environmental planning, which is about reducing stormwater runoff, and then down under a panic six soil erosion. So it's really water quality, soil erosion. And I would like to articulate some vision goals associated with measurable objectives and actions to reduce pollution of our land, water and air. We have a section on sustainability, but it doesn't talk about articulate our goals, measurable objectives and actions to reduce pollution of our land, water and air. So I'd like to see whatever anybody thinks about that.
Same by Catherine.
Sounds good.
I'm fine with that.
Do you know where you would put it off the top of your head? Okay, great. All right.
And the last one, thank you for your time, is under the community work program. Number one, I appreciate that smaller area plan with Peachy Corners of Gonet, uh, over there, um, Winter's Chapel. I would, uh, I'm a big proponent of adding that safe streets program manager position on the, on the, on this, on the action plan to continue building out those, you know, you had it, you had it appendices, you had it, you had it current plans that have been approved inside here as well. And you talk about that safe streets plan and so on. Um, without further funding, that position is eliminated this year. Um, I'd like to be able to continue building out and safety retrofits of our streets, um, and see that happen. Um, really tactically level in that community work program is a bike share number T eleven under transportation for a hundred fifty-seven, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty seven. I'm not sure if that's coming from general funds or splosh or whatever. I imagine that would be general funds. I'd like to have a separate conversation about that. I want to take it up here because I believe the efficacy of bike share programs are dwindling. Um, and that we could consider a pilot e-bike rebate program like dozens of cities have done in the, in the U S. Uh, we, we could leverage that. So I'd like to have that as a sidebar.
That's not really part of a comp plan.
But it's in the, it's in the
Right.
work plan. So I kind of, I don't know about bike share for a hundred fifty K for twenty twenty seven.
Are you saying we should strike that?
I would, I would strike
I think that we all are agreeing. There's enough of us agreeing up here. All right. Anybody else have anything? Big pictures? Okay. So what we need now first is a motion. I think the way to do this is to put a motion to put it on the floor and then the amendments. I think that's the best way to do it.
If I can just point out, just based on the notes I've taken and the conversations we've had, it sounds like there's really only one issue that there's probably going to be disagreement on, and that's the neighborhood, suburban neighborhood transition. Everything else, I
I think there was the Ashford. So I think there's two. So you could pull those out.
We want to pull those, do those as individual motion.
And then I think that, do we all agree on the striking those Waterworks, Brook Run and civic campuses?
I do not.
Okay, so that one.
So
Are you okay?
Four different motions. All right.
Okay. Right, that's efficient.
I'll be able to articulate them correctly, but
John, John has them written down, so we can try. Um, I think you can say like move on everything. I don't know how to do this, but anyway. Uh, all right. But first, we need a motion, I think, to put it on the floor. To, so, so we have no motion. So to move this forward.
I moved to put, um, approval of the comprehensive plan on the floor for
But not approval. Transmit.
I, I'm, yeah, sorry, to trans, thank you. Move to transmit the comprehensive plan um, to the appropriate governmental authorities.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Tom.
I have some amendments to my motion.
Okay.
And John, I think I'll actually let you bring up the suburban neighborhood one first because
It's first.
You're wanting to make changes, and I think some of the rest of us are kind of happy with it as it is. So it might be better if you make that motion.
Are you talking about the neighborhood transition opportunities?
The one where you and Lynn wanted to strike it and some others of us felt that it was okay, maybe some changes.
I make a motion to amend the proposed twenty forty-five comprehensive land use plan draft dated July third, twenty twenty five by removing all language on neighborhood transition opportunities listed on page eighty mentioned as opportunities in the community agenda and other sections as well.
Okay, I'm going to second it. I don't know that, I can second things. I'm seconding that. So am I allowed to run this part of the thing? Okay. Um, so now we have discussion. Any discussion?
I'd like to state that I think it needs to to go. I don't think it's appropriate to have these transition sections on areas like North Peachtree Road. If you look at the allowance, it has to be within a half mile of Georgetown West. Look at the map for Georgetown West. It purposely zigzags to go all the way over to the fire station over on Peachford, over in that area. Therefore, making all the area around Peachtree Middle School subject to transition zone. Um, it was mentioned that this was only intended for Jet Ferry. If that's the case, this map currently allows a bunch of transition zones up and down North Peachtree, where I think it's inappropriate.
Okay.
So would, would it be better to just strike North Peachtree from this list? I I'm just talking out loud. I
No, I liked, I actually liked commercial transition. I'm just not sure we can pull that off tonight.
What do you want to say?
I just wanted to, to note the North Peachtree issue. So that, that is an error in the plan in a previous draft. Brook Run Park was also included as having this sort of buffer of a quarter mile around it for these uses, and North Peachtree remained in there accidentally. So North Peachtree should not be in there.
But I'd like to make a move to amend and pull and strike North Peachtree Road from page eighty with all regards to the neighborhood transition opportunities.
Oh, wait, wait. But I can agree to his, but I can agree to his change. I accept his change, right? I can do that. I accept his change.
Just to clarify, the motion is to strike North Peachtree, but keep other discussion of the transition?
Rob, I personally want it all gone, but if I don't win my way on making them all gone, I want to have a motion to kill North Peachtree. So I'm trying to think of the best way to appropriately do that as I see. So, you know, if you, if somebody else wants to make a motion for other roads, I'll, I'll work with you there too.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question all in favor of this amendment to s- strike North Peachtree Road, but but leave the section, is that right?
Well, let's do it first.
Yeah, let's do that first. Okay, strike North Peachtree Road from the section.
Bye.
Um, any opposed? Okay, now that has been accepted. Time out for one second. I have a question about Scribner's errors because that was clearly a Scribner error, right? Someone should have caught it. It wasn't intentional. Do we have to make amendments for Scribner's errors at this point?
Well, I'd like them to be on the record.
Okay, that's fine.
That they're actually
That's fine.
They're there and you know what you're voting on.
Okay, that's fine.
John, do you want to do your second motion?
You want me to repeat? The first one is to motion to amend to removing all language on neighborhood transition opportunities listed on page eighty mentioned as opportunities in the community agenda and all the other sections too. So now I want it all gone.
Second. All right. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, I call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, all opposed, say nay, or raise your hands, that fails by two to five. All right.
All right. I have notes if you would like me to try to make the second
Yes.
Amendment. All right. So I make a motion that we amend
You're not leaving.
Um, sections. Uh, what's the, what's the name of the section here? The character use. The following, um, changes to character use areas for the perimeter core section. Um, I move that we move, um, multi-unit senior and assisted living and mixed unit to the, um, yellow appropriate with consideration, uh, with, uh, um, appropriate with consideration section that we move regional, uh, commercial to yellow appropriate with considerations and that we, uh, we had small residential also moved to yellow with appropriate considerations. Um, also in this section that we change the language for the, um, uh, MARTA Todd, rather than say to, um, implement their recommendations, but to work with P C I D and MARTA for redevelopment of the MARTA property. For the perimeter transition, um, area that we move mixed use and senior and assisted living to the yellow appropriate with consideration section. For the Dunwoody Village.
Wait.
Did I miss one?
Rob, are you intending to go through everyone in one motion right now?
I, all of them that are all together. I thought we would just do it.
The ones that are the same changes.
Because we're basically making the same changes to.
Are you gonna want to vote separately?
I think, I think it'll.
Okay, so let's just do perimeter. Let's just do perimeter.
Withdraw my motion.
No.
And I'm doing new motion so that we.
But you had only talked about perimeter. So that's fine. We can do perimeter core and perimeter transition together.
Okay.
Yes, okay. So move by Councilman Price, second by Councilman Lautenbacher. Any discussion on this one?
I will ask just because I was unsure of the voice. It was for, we're doing perimeter core on page 83. We're moving to yellow regional commercial, multi-unit, senior assisted living and mixed use.
For perimeter core, the motion was yes for multi-unit, senior assisted living, mixed use and regional commercial moving to the yellow section.
And then did you do transition as well?
And small lot residential to yellow.
Yeah, we moved small lot residential.
And to change the text regarding the redevelopment of the MARTA Todd area.
Okay.
And then he did perimeter transition.
And then I added perimeter transition, which was to move mixed use and senior assisted uses to the yellow appropriate with considerations.
And then you used, you changed the multi-unit considerations to be the slump versus what's already there. There was sort of a differentiation if you look at it.
Yeah, we'll have a motion at the end to change that language to slump for all, everything.
Okay. I'm good with that change. I second.
Okay, so there was a motion by Rob, second by Catherine. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna stand by my small lot residential staying in red inappropriate.
I don't know that you're wrong. That was my idea, but that was a long time ago.
We can amend the amendment.
I think amend the amendment.
Well, somebody can, or can I amend my own amendment?
Well, just y'all have to remember this as we think through this. I know it's difficult. She's got to be able to record what you're actually doing and they've got to be able to they've got to be able to understand what we're doing.
We have notes and we're gonna send them to her.
But the public's gonna see what's being voted on. So I, I would do, I'd break it down a little bit more concise and take it, take all night. Let's do it right.
So I would like to modify my amendment to remove small lot residential and keep it where it currently is located and coded in the.
Okay.
But all the changes remain.
I think that what our attorney is suggesting is we just do perimeter core and then we do perimeter. So withdraw your second.
I will withdraw my.
No, first Catherine has to withdraw her second and.
Withdraw.
Okay.
I will withdraw my motion. I have a new motion.
Okay.
Let me flip back to my notes here. My motion is for the perimeter core use area that we move multi-unit, senior and assisted living, mixed use and regional commercial all to the yellow use. And that we adjust the language that discusses the MARTA Todd to say that we will work with PCID and MARTA for redevelopment of that property, but not reference a specific plan.
Second.
Second. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. All right, Councilman Price.
All right, for the perimeter transition area, I move that we move mixed use and senior and assisted living to the yellow appropriate with considerations category.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? Oh, wait, John.
I had the issue of the multi-unit considerations in yellow. Right now it's an odd consideration. It's a different. That's why I want the slump.
Right, I'm gonna make the slump at the end for all of it, not just that.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor. Wait, did we had a motion a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries unanimously. No, we've already, that was different. We've already removed it. We, he didn't make it. Okay.
We amended the.
All right, next.
All right, for the Dunwoody Village area, I move that we move what are we moving to this? Oh, senior and assisted living to the yellow appropriate with considerations category.
If we're doing Dunwoody Village Core, we also talked about mixed use.
Mixed use is already in the yellow for the.
No, it's not on the core, on Dunwoody Village. On page 87, it's not.
It's in the transition. I was in the transition. Let me redo my amendment then. For Dunwoody Village, that we move senior assisted living and mixed use to the yellow appropriate with considerations category.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that carries.
All right, for Dunwoody Village Transition, I move that we shift senior and assisted living to the yellow appropriate with considerations category.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Thank you.
For the Georgetown West area, I move that we move mixed use and senior and assisted living to the yellow appropriate with considerations category.
Second. Any further discussion? Everybody, okay, all in favor, raise your hand. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Sharon.
All right, for the Georgetown West Transition, I move that we shift senior and assisted living from green to the yellow appropriate with considerations category.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call the question all in favor, raise your hand. That carries unanimously, Sharon.
All right, for the Georgetown East, I move that we move senior and assisted living and multi-unit to the yellow appropriate with considerations category.
Second. Wait, I have to add something. So, because Ken said we had to add something. So on page 94, the most of the area statement needs to be struck. That's not accurate. Before where it talks about the makeup of the area, it's not right.
Most of the area consists of.
This is the First Baptist Church. That's not right.
Is that, is it a Scrivener's error?
I don't know, but we're gonna vote on it.
I would like to amend my amendment to also strike the line, most of the area consists of First Baptist Church of Atlanta and its adjacent adjoining parking lots.
Right. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
All right, for the Winters Chapel section, I move that we move multi-unit mixed use and senior and assisted living to the yellow appropriate with considerations category.
Second. You talk too fast. For the projects and initiatives where it says coordinate with Peachtree Corners in Gwinnett County to establish a redevelopment vision for the area through a small area plan, can you add Peachtree Boulevard to that as well? Just so we correct it there.
I would like to amend my amendment to move to add a small area plan with adjacent jurisdictions.
Right, and Peachtree, Peach, it would be for Winters Chapel and Peachtree Boulevard.
For, yes, for what you just said for.
Right.
Winters Chapel and Peachtree Boulevard. So somebody's gotta second that.
Right, Catherine. Second. All in favor, raise your hand.
So that's gonna require two votes because he amended his amendment the way it was done.
Okay, now we have to vote on the original amendment that's now amended. All in favor, say aye. Aye, raise your hand. Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries. Winters Chapel Transition.
Winters Chapel Transition. For the Winters Chapel Transition, I move that we shift senior and assisted living to the yellow appropriate with considerations category.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. That very.
For the Jet Ferry, I move that we move senior assisted living, senior assisted living, mixed use and medium density commercial to the yellow appropriate with considerations category.
All, second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, I call the question all in favor, raise your hand.
Didn't hear, what are we voting on? I didn't hear Rob.
I'm sorry, Jet Ferry.
Jet Ferry.
Jet Ferry.
Okay, thank you.
You need the, okay, all in favor, raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Ashford.
Ashford is next. I'm happy to make an amendment, a motion if someone else would like to make a different motion before I make a motion.
John, you want to make an emotion for this one?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the first was the senior assisted living was gonna go to yellow. Was that, was that the thoughts?
Ashford.
On Ashford, yes.
Yes.
And then I had the idea that I wanted mixed use and multi-unit to red. But that was just me, maybe?
Yeah.
Why don't we do this? Why don't I make, I'll make a motion to move senior assisted living to yellow appropriate with considerations. And then if there's another amendment after that, discuss that one.
Second. All right, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, I call the question all in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Aye, okay.
Madam Mayor, I want to go back on something Rob did earlier. On one of your amendments, the mayor spoke about adding some street and I asked, was that a Scrivener's error? And we weren't sure, but I don't think we voted on the actual First Amendment and the clerk cannot tell me whether she followed that. So I want to be very careful.
We'll go back. It was not, there was no street. I.
Right. This, this, this was the Georgetown where we removed the, the sentence.
I thought we did vote on it, but we'll go back and do that. We'll.
Be safe. I'm gonna make that motion right now to strike reference, that reference sentence to First Baptist Church and its adjacent.
Georgetown East.
From the Georgetown East section.
Second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, that passes unanimously. I think we voted on it three times. Okay, Ashford.
Ashford, I'd like.
Hey, John, talk louder.
We've already made one motion to move things to yellow, correct?
Just the seniors.
Yeah, and that just, so now if you want to make another motion.
I'd like to make a motion to move mixed use and multi-unit from yellow appropriate with consideration to red inappropriate.
For a second.
Oh, I'll second it for purposes of discussion. All right, there's a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
I'll just make a comment. I can appreciate why this is being requested. I think it may be related to one particular project and I would think it would be short sighted to not in the future be willing to consider if something that seems like a really good fit for this area comes in that we don't indicate that we would be willing to look at it. So I would prefer that we keep those yellow.
Go ahead.
And, and my analogy is the Dunwoody Village where we're, it's a yellow multi-unit, two to five stories as well.
Okay, all in favor of this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay. All right, Sharon, that was one to six. Get it? All right, next. I'm sorry.
For the Peachtree Boulevard section, I move that we shift multi-unit, mixed use and senior and assisted living to the yellow appropriate with consideration section.
Second. And just as we, we said we're gonna do the study in the, with the Winters Chapel section because I think that's really critical. That doesn't need to be in the motion. It was just my discussion because I did it in the other Winters Chapel. All right, all in favor? Raise your hand, aye, whatever. All right, that passes unanimously. Do you have the next one?
I move that we strike the civic campuses section, but keep some of the appropriate text to feed back into the suburban uses as appropriate.
May I update that, please?
Yes.
If I say, I'd like to make a motion to remove civic campuses, Brook Run Park and Waterwork areas from pages 106 to 111, deleting all sections and revert maps back to suburban neighborhood.
And you're okay? Well, we need a second.
Well, Rob made a motion. There was no call for a second. John took the floor and made another motion. We gotta go back to Rob and ask for a second.
Substitute.
My only concern is that we've been going section by section and so I was trying to keep going section by section.
Okay, so we have to go by section by section. Okay.
It's tedious, but.
We've, there's only three things left. Let's go. All right, so there's a motion. Rob's motion was on the floor, Catherine. I guess like, oh, because you don't like this one. I need a second on removing.
John seconded it.
John seconded it. Thank you. All right, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of removing civic campuses, raise your hand. Okay, wait. One, two, three. Seriously, people? Okay, and then all opposed. So that, that fails. All right, I'm coming back to that in a minute. I'm coming back to that in a minute.
I think I misunderstood what we wanted to do with that.
Right, me too. All right, Brook Run Park.
I move that we strike the Brook Run Park section from the document, but keep, but keep any text as appropriate discussion elsewhere in the document.
Second.
Second by John. Any further discussion? I call the question all in favor of striking Brook Run Park. Raise your hand. Okay, that, all opposed? Put your hands down. All opposed. So that passes four to three.
I did not think that one would be contentious. I, I moved to strike Waterworks from the document as a specific section, but to keep text as appropriate in the plan from this.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
John seconded, thank you. All in favor, say aye. All right, so that was three to four. Okay, oh, wait, wait, were you in favor or opposed? Okay, all, I can do math. All opposed, raise your hand. We don't abstain. All right, so that fails three to four. No, we can't actually unless you own the Waterworks, which you do not. Only in Monopoly. Okay, can I, okay. All right, then I need a, I want some, I can do it myself, right? I can make a motion at this point, whatever. I don't ever do that. But I would like to move that in any situation on these land use charts where it says requires additional review process, that we say it requires a slump. Because that is how zoning works in Georgia.
So that is in addition to the hearing with the council. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so right now, all these changes would require a slump for the most part, like almost all of them. And this, I don't, this reads like it might not require slump, which then gives the it doesn't give me as a mayor and councilperson enough confidence that we're gonna follow a public process that's been vetted.
My question is, is that necessary in the plan or will that just be part of the U D O?
It's necessary in the plan to spell out to the public what our intentions are with rezonings moving forward. In my opinion, I realize it could just be in the code, but for, y'all don't have to, I just need a second. John seconded it. Okay, discussion.
I just, the analogy is we had a master plan for the Dunwoody Village back in 2012 or 11. I don't think every, every developer knew they had to go through rezoning that. And, and we didn't have that in the plan. Say, oh, you have to go through zoning. It's.
No, but it's the, so I, if this was silent on that, I would be okay. What I, it makes me uncomfortable is that we say requires additional review process without define, like if it just said nothing, I would be okay. But this to me, whether I'm reading in between the lines too much or not, it infers that we're gonna develop in our code rewrite a special zoning process. And I don't like that idea. So that's why I'm saying it. You don't have to vote for it, but that's why I'm saying it. Because a slump offers a understood define, these decisions should be council decisions ultimately, and they should go through the zoning process.
I, I, I think we agree with that. I'm just trying to figure out if it's necessary to spell that out here or to spell it out.
I, I think it is, but I'm one seven.
I agree with the mayor. I believe that anything with approved with considerations, the consideration is, you know, appropriate with consideration is that it's a slump process, that it goes in front of council, it goes in front of the community, it gets fully vetted and we hear it and we decide it.
Right.
So what we're adding is a definition of what appropriate considerations.
Yes, that's what we're adding.
I, for the conversation is 99% of people don't know what SLUP is either.
Especially in New York.
Do you want to just say? Just simply say, these will go to city council for ultimate approval? No, you don't want to say, I mean, so people don't know what SLUP is, so are we gonna define what that is somewhere?
It's in your zoning code.
Right. Right.
The average citizen out there is just going to read and they're going to like.
But we can say it requires a special land use permit.
So the intent of the adding this narration is to try to dispel people from being, uh, afraid of what we may, I mean.
Not afraid, but I think it's, makes it clear. Remember, this is a twenty year plan. So it makes it makes it clear that these are council decisions. That it, that there's no internal, I mean, there's, staff makes a recommendation, but there's no internal approval process for big rezonings like we're talking about here.
What, one thought that I think might marry this together, could the text say, follow the approval process as described in Dunwoody code and then we just cite the code for the slump? And then if people are, I mean, I, or does that add even more confusion to me?
Say the slump. I mean, just vote on it. All right, did we have a, we had a second because John seconded. All in favor of that change to slump, raise your hand. Right. Uh, that's, uh, six Stacy's a no, raise, no, you're yes? Okay, I don't know.
All right, I'm just copying.
Right, it's, it's in the weeds. I know. All right, seven. All right.
There were some other notes that Joe had, uh, kind of big picture. Did you have any of those you wanted to?
Oh, and John, wait.
Let me jump in real quick since it's another, since we just approved the civic campuses, I want to revisit that. I'd like to make a motion to amend the chart in section one oh seven, page one oh seven. The senior assisted living down to appropriate with considerations. Um, on top of that, uh, I'd like a, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I'm also unsure of what public institutional means when it comes to something like the J C C.
Right.
I have questions whether what's appropriate, what can they say they want to build under public institutional that we just approved the saying it's fully appropriate?
Richard, can you answer that question?
Is it J C C? Anything else? Utility?
Again, civic campuses, that's.
So civic campus came back surprisingly to life. And the, we want to know what public institutional means.
It means public like, uh, what we want, um, or institutional.
But we don't control these properties, but we're, but it's not. Go ahead.
Yeah, government uses at all levels and institutional land uses. Government includes city hall, police, fire station, libraries, post office, schools, example. Examples of institute, institutional land uses include colleges, churches, cemetery and hospitals.
Okay, but none of those things are at the J C C and at Georgia State. That doesn't, we didn't include schools.
You just defined, J C C is an institution and that was defined by what he just says.
But it, but the list of things that can be used or civic uses that we didn't include.
Those are examples. Doesn't mean we're discounting any other. We're not discounting schools. Anybody would argue that public schools are public.
Okay, I'm going to add, this is maybe the hill I'm going to die on, probably not, but the, I'm going to ask why we are treating the J C C differently than, than Dunwoody High School's campus, for example. I mean, I don't understand. I mean, to me, they're all civic campuses, so we're, it's either to me, like we said, I thought we decided it was all or nothing and I thought we had figured that out.
We didn't vote on that. But we could.
No, right, so we could, we could vote, go back. Staff had recommended that we do nothing. Staff had recommended that for ease of whatever, that we remove the classification. That's what they recommended. And then we didn't remove the classification. So if we're not removing the classification, I know there's an amendment on the floor about moving, although I don't think there's been a second, about moving the yellow stuff to yellow.
I'm also willing, if a governmental entity can put a school where they want because they have J C C is not a governmental entity, but if we say institutional and include a school now, we have now just overstepped and given them authority that we have not given anybody else. Therefore, I'd also like to amend to remove the institutional, uh, language, the the public and institutional, I'd like to remove both public institutional and senior assisted living down to yellow.
Okay. I need a second. Second by Rob. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call the question all in favor, say aye. Oh, raise your hands. Okay. No, you're a no? Okay, you're a no. I haven't put hands down yet. Okay. All against, raise your hand. All right, so that's six to one. I think that's a mess, but.
Now, I believe we are too big. Joe had a number of text changes, maybe? Well, I know for specific, we had remove bike share.
Uh, move to remove bike share from the work program.
What page, please?
Oh, what page?
You're lucky. It's, uh, item T eleven. I don't have the PDF page, but, uh, it's T dot eleven, transportation under the community work plan.
Page one eighteen.
Hundred fifty thousand dollars, twenty twenty seven.
I had a second. Oh, wait, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, raise your hand. Oh, any discussion? Uh, all right, all in favor, raise your hand to removing this from the work list. Uh, all opposed.
Wait, wait, Lynn, I have a question.
Yes.
I don't understand on page one eighteen, T eleven says, update comprehensive transportation plan and integrate bike, ped bike framework. What am I missing? I don't see where it says bike share.
I'm, I'm looking at the packet.
What's the date of your, uh?
I'm looking.
I'm looking at it off the website.
It's T eleven, page one eighteen. I, I downloaded this from the city's agenda, uh, like Friday.
No, she's looking at the website.
Website is the June draft.
Ah, okay, I couldn't get, I couldn't get it. My, my computer did not want to upload it from the agenda. Okay.
All right, all.
So just for clarification on this vote, where is that? What draft is that that they're trying to amend right now? Can y'all tell us? July, July?
July third.
Novembers. It doesn't matter because the con, the, the thing is, is we're striking that, we're voting to strike the bike share. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, are there any more that you want?
I, I was hoping we could articulate our task, but it's, it's, we can't make up the verbiage, asking staff to come back and mention something articulating, uh, vision goals associated with measurable objectives and actions to reduce pollution of our land, water and air. I, is that something we could just have a motion on and ask staff to put, put in something? And this is, I had a nod earlier about sustainability.
Do we have time or can we just have it done in the next sustainability plan?
Or should, should we do that? And is that a minor revision, um?
Okay, all right, so we can revisit it.
I think then the, the articulation of these visionary statements could be minor visions then that would, I'll.
Okay.
I'm done.
You're done.
Do we want to?
John has something, hold on.
Well, Madam Mayor, you mentioned a master plan or a node for the Winter's Chapel, the Peachtree Boulevard. We may want to add that into the work plan because if it's not there now.
We did, I added it, I added Peachtree Boulevard to the Winter's Chapel. There was an item on the Winter's Chapel list.
Thank you.
So I just added, I amended that when we amended it to the words.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we want to add all the civic organizations into the civic area?
I'll, somebody will make a motion. I'll second it.
I motion that we move all the civic campuses, church, school, et cetera, under civic campuses.
Second. Second. Okay, uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Wait, wait, John, did you have discussion?
I just don't understand how you're going to get every nonprofit, every religious, every, you know, person that thinks they're religious, even working out of their homes. I think you are opening a Pandora's box beyond compare that you're not thinking of the unintended consequences of what you're.
Argument against it. That's a good argument against it.
I'm a religious, I can, I can perform weddings. I'm my own religion. I have now just zoned myself based on what you just did.
Okay.
How does it work today if somebody wants to, you, how did, how did, isn't it so, all right, there's zoning and then there's, I'm going to have a church, so you still have to go in front and have a rezoning.
Would you define it as a land use?
If, if, if this is a new zoning, if this is new zoning category, then if you're a residential, you'd have to go and apply to go be, be rezoned as civic.
You're not under.
Isn't, isn't this just if one of these changes what we will can, what we as a community feel is appropriate for to change to. So I, I think the discussion here is different than how it'll be handled in the U D O, right?
Yes.
So to me, this is just if a community, one of these community areas changes, what, what do we think are reasonable uses for it? What do we think the council needs to look at and what do we think are inappropriate uses since we're keeping?
To be a, a residential unit, they come back to us for a rezoning or a slump or a change.
Right. All right, so we'll just leave it then. This is, and I, if we, if we do some research on this and we come back and we decide that this was a bad idea, period. Is that, would that be a pretty minor change?
I think we can make the case to D C A that.
Okay, okay, so I think we leave it as we did. I don't know if there was a motion and a second. So who wants to, you get to withdraw your second?
You do.
Oh, I second it. I thought, I withdraw my second to Rob. Do you mind? Oh, Catherine's motion. I didn't write it down. Okay. All right, so now we're back to the original amended motion to transmit the plan, so D C A can start, N A R C can start reviewing it. Um, that was a long time ago.
Second.
No, it's been seconded. It's our seconded. Okay, uh, any further discussion on this plan on transmitting it? Seeing none, I call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And, uh, any opposed, raise your hand.
I oppose.
Okay, that was six to one, Sharon. Okay. All right, that was a lot. Yes, that was the fourth. All right, we had a break already by accident. I don't think we need another one. Okay. No, okay, um, on to the consent. Does anyone have questions on the items on the consent agenda? Move by Tom.
I'll second.
Second by Rob. Any questions or discussion on these items? Uh, seeing none, I call the question all in favor, say aye. Raise your hands, aye. Okay, that passes unanimously. Michael Starling. Bet you thought we'd never get to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for your, uh, time this evening. Uh, we are here to talk about the Holiday Headquarters. Uh, we talked about this at the retreat earlier this year. Um, since that time, a small group of staff people and some partners in the community have been working together. Um, and we're here to talk a little bit about our plans moving forward. Uh, the idea of Holiday H Q is really to leverage Dunwoody's existing competitive advantage from restaurants, retail and hotels to drive even more visitation to Dunwoody during, during the holidays. Um, it's important to know that this is the first of what we hope is a couple of years, right? Th- this is not a one-time deal and we're done. We want to come back each year, grow this, this program, um, change it. Uh, we will be putting um, money in next year's budget and in the communication budget for this already. So we're already thinking about, about next year. Uh, the goal's establish a, a sort of a brand, holiday brand for, for Dunwoody. Uh, encourage community-wide participation. This is very focused on driving, um, visitors to our commercial areas, but obviously we want um, the, the residents in Dunwoody to participate as well, and we want areas outside of perimeter to, to be included. Um, again, boost visitation. We want to pull people in. The holidays are already the busiest time in, in Dunwoody. Um, our I think Black Friday, I looked on Place for A I, we had about a hundred and forty-seven thousand people visit Dunwoody that day. That's not including people who live here. That's just visitors from outside. So we want to continue to push, uh, those visitors and enhance our, our image and quality of life overall. So this is a collaborative effort, uh, the city, Discover Dunwoody, uh, Create Dunwoody and P C I D. We sort of see ourselves as the conveners pulling people together, sort of casting a vision, but the real work's going to be done by property owners, uh, Ravinia when they do their, uh, holiday lights. Um, High Street, Ashford Lane, these, when they program their spaces, that's really where it takes off. I, I know, uh, that Rachel's going to be talking about a, a lighting of, of the city hall. Uh, that is not specifically for holiday lights, but it does play into it. We want people to, during the holidays, to really play up um, lights and activities and events, um, around the holidays. Um, this is very focused on marketing and, uh, social media. So we've got, uh, Discover Dunwoody participating. I know that they have, since we, we put this presentation together, they have, they've purchased a number of other URL, URLs. So there'll be like Dunwoody, Holiday H Q, uh, Perimeter, Holiday H Q. All of those are going to be pushing to one website where visitors and residents will be able to go find out all the events that, uh, that are happening in Dunwoody during that time. The financial commitment, what we're asking for tonight is twenty-five thousand five hundred for the city. That's going to pay for a mailer, much like the Dunwoody Digest. It will go to every resident, every business in the city. Uh, we are going to include banners in all of our commercial areas. And we're going to expand the snowflakes, the lighted snowflakes that create Dunwoody and discover Dunwoody started last year. Um, add more in the village and then add some to all of our commercial areas. Uh, and then Discover Dunwoody will be paying for a lot of the social media. Um, obviously the website and a lot of, um, paid sort of that added value. I know there's a, a comment earlier, uh, about restaurants and Instagram. I know that Discover Dunwoody has that covered and they're going to be pushing a lot of that for Holiday H Q. Uh, so our recommendation is to use the general fund contingency to support this in the amount of twenty-five thousand five hundred. Be happy to take questions.
I'm excited about this because I've only been talking about it for six years and I'm glad that we're trying to make our mark on the region and attract people to our commercial areas that pay seventy percent or more of our tax revenue every year. So I think this is good.
I'll just make the comment. I think this is a small dollar marketing effort. We might as well see if it works and I really like the fact that somebody else is paying for half of it.
Yeah.
Right, too. I'm good with everything that was mentioned. What I really liked to hear was that you said outside of the perimeter area. In other words, your initial slide doesn't mention Georgetown. It doesn't mention the village. It doesn't mention other areas. I want to make sure that that's part of the plan as well and that it's all basically equal funding across the city.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I like the headquarters graphic.
Yep. Yeah, we did a lot of work on Holiday H Q. Uh, Kathy and, and Jennifer did a lot of work on that. It's a lot harder to figure out Holiday H Q than you, you would think. Make it look good.
Hey, Michael, um, you wear many hats. Executive Director of our Development Authority, yada, yada. So I, I'll, I'll leave this to Eric Linton and staff, but I value your time and I value your experience. And, um, I don't want you to be overburdened in the bandwidth of kind of shepherding this. I just, that's my little commentary. I mean, if there's other staff that are really.
Well, Jennifer, to be honest, is really pushing this. Uh, she wasn't able to be here, so, uh, I was designated, but it is a, it's definitely a team effort. I mean, Discover Dunwoody is there, we're, we're, we've been hosting meetings. We're pulling in all of the marketing directors from, from the mall, from High Street. I mean, this really is, um, w- we're doing a little bit of the work upfront, but the, the real power of this is when High Street activates their green, when Ashford Lane activates theirs. I know that Ashford Lane has plans, big plans this year to push during the holidays. I know Mark Calvin is here as well, so it's shared responsibility for sure.
So, um, I, you know, I got, I got way in the weeds with Rosemary and what she did, Rosemary Watts last year in the village and stuff, and I, I went and, and really noodled on what would it take to be, uh, holiday lights throughout the whole city and buy these snowflakes? And I came up with a kind of about a hundred and eighty-six. You know, thirty in Georgetown, fifty-four in Dunwoody Village, twenty-three at Jeff Carrey, eighteen in Winter Chapel, sixty-one in perimeter, and that's just Ashford Dunwoody. Uh, from Hammond to Mount Vernon. Um, so I, and I, I'm just, I fully support in the twenty twenty-six budget, using the tourism product development component that, you know, we're using a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and twenty-five K this year for wayfinding signs. I would totally support a twenty twenty-six budget to. for wayfinding signs. I would totally support a twenty-twenty-six budget to, you know.
All right. Let's see if this works. But let's see if it works.
So the idea of this is, is to look, I mean, you, you, we don't think you should put banners or lights on every single light pole. We think that would be too much. So we think this is a good start. We'll see. Is it too, is it too little possibly? And we'll add to it next year.
Are we buying or renting them?
We're, we're buying them.
Oh, we are?
Yeah. So we will own them and then we'll, a part of the cost and it's ongoing cost because you have to, you have to store them. You're going to have to fix them eventually. You have to put them up and take them down. So there is an ongoing cost, but no, we're buying them.
Yeah, I support whatever it takes to get the electric installed. Um, is the C I D eventually looking at partnering as well to contribute?
They, they're on board. We don't know if they're going to contribute with lights. Um, but they're, they're on board, working with it.
Inside, I mean, Anne Hamlin totally supported. So, okay. Thank you.
All right. Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Rob. Second by Catherine. Any discussion?
Just have one question to clarify. This doesn't, we're still doing our own stuff in Brook Run, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. This is specifically for the commercial area. So there could be a lot more all over the community. Absolutely.
And you're gonna, someone's going to reach out to all the commercial property owners that have significant.
We've already worked, we've already reached out to them. They're going to funnel all of their events to us. And that, that, that conversation will continue.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor say aye. Uh, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next. Oh my gosh, sustainability people. You picked a great night to present. I think I wore, I do want to say, I think I warned y'all.
Well, and I put this on the agenda. This is my agenda I added. So I, I share blame for this.
A warning.
We'll bill you later.
Nope.
All right.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Good evening. Uh, my name is Larry Hyman. I'm Vice Chair of the City Sustainability Committee. Um, it was nice and sunny at five-thirty when I came over here today and I was all excited to talk about solar and the sun was shining. And now it's pitch black outside and I feel like it's kind of like round twelve of a fifteen-round fight, but do my best here. You guys are amazing talking about these issues for like two hours. So before this, uh, you have your discussion on solar with night, uh, I wanted to give a brief presentation and provide a, uh, a primer or a refresher for many of you on, uh, the benefits of solar and the different models for accessing solar, uh, on city properties. Then we're going to introduce an attractive new program that's, that leverages E P A grant money to offer solar at below market price. And after that, uh, we provide some information on a recently installed solar system at Dunwoody United Methodist Church, um, which I'm sure you're aware received a lot of press earlier this summer when it launched. Um, and this church, the church actually participated in a pilot version of the E P A program that I, I just mentioned. Um, then we'll close with the recommendation and answer any questions that you may have as best that we can. We wanted to have someone from the solar industry here tonight to, who actually works in the industry to answer any questions that you have, but, uh, due to like conflict of interest concerns, um, that's not possible. And so we'll just do the best we can. So benefits of solar, uh, just as a quick refresher, what are the benefits of solar? Uh, there, there are numerous benefits, including lower net electricity costs as well as a hedging against future spikes in utility prices. Lower greenhouse gas emissions. Having solar, uh, on Dunwoody's buildings would, uh, enhance Dunwoody's reputation as an innovative city that, uh, both cares about the environment and supports solar manufacturing and installation jobs here in Georgia. There's a growing, uh, solar industry here in Georgia that you're probably aware of, including Q cells up, up I seventy-five in Cartersville and in Dalton. Uh, and there's also lots of, uh, solar installation companies throughout the state. Um, in addition, you can use solar, if you have solar on the building, you can a- attach a backup, um, battery storage and turn that building into a resilience hub that can benefit, uh, residents, uh, in the case of extended power outages. And also it's frankly, it's right in our, uh, Dunwoody's still a sustainability plan that the city, uh, will support renewable energy programs and adopt its use in government operations. I don't want to go too much into other examples, but just wanted to point out a few. Um, here in Georgia, many cities have already installed solar on government buildings, including many buildings in the city of Savannah, uh, excuse me, uh, in the city of Atlanta, as well as many in the city of Savannah, and they're all saving money. And even closer to home, Tucker and Roswell have already installed, uh, solar with actually Roswell, uh, Tucker actually has a battery storage system as well on one of its buildings. So this is quite common around the area. Um, so how does a municipality go about accessing solar? Um, just wanted to refresh you on the ways that this can be done. One is just buying it outright, just like buying a car. You can buy it with cash. You can finance it with a loan and then you own it. And this is certainly an option. Um, but with this, the city would need to monitor the system and maintain it and handle any insurance and frankly, given the city's limited staff, I wonder if that might be a burden. The other option is third-party ownership. Um, this is, this seems to be the most commonly used option among other cities around the area. Um, with this, there's no upfront costs. And you see savings from day one. And the most common way that cities are, are, um, are accessing solar in this way is through C P As. C P A stands for Solar Energy Procurement Agreement. And basically with a C P A, the solar company installs and owns the system, takes care of all maintenance, insurance. And you just pay a certain rate per unit of electricity that's generated by the system, which is lower than the rate that you pay the utility, thus saving money. And the systems are metered so that if, for example, a group of panels, solar panels are not producing at any one moment and not sending energy into your building, you don't pay for that energy. So the, the solar company that owns and maintains the system is highly motivated to keep it working in, in, in great condition. So basically you're just saving money on a, on the energy that you produce yourself versus buying from the utility. And this slide says that this type of arrangement or the C P A agreements are not available everywhere, but here in Georgia, Georgia, they are available. Solar leases also on the slide, but they do not seem to be as commonly used as C P A, uh, agreements. And so we're kind of lucky to be talking about these C P As at, at an interesting time now. And that's because the Georgia Bright Program is launching, uh, next week, actually. And if you're not familiar with the Georgia Bright Program, it's the name of the, the E P A designated and E P A funded program here in Georgia under the E P A's Solar For All National Program. E P A has granted, has provided money to one designated entity in each state to use the E P A's grant dollars to establish a program to provide below market, below market price solar to, uh, certain households and nonprofit organizations. And luckily municipal governments are eligible to participate in this program. And so this program's launching in August, um, and it's almost certainly going to provide the lowest price that you could find on the market, thanks to the federal subsidies. And it also a performance guarantee. And under Georgia Bright, the installations are carried out by the solar companies that are designated by the Georgia Bright Program. This slide highlights just a few of the examples, a, a few of the advantages of Georgia Bright. You know, they handle all the installation financing and ongoing operations. There's a performance guarantee. Um, and again, it, it leverages the, the hundred and fifty-six million dollars that the E P A is giving to, to Georgia, to, to the Georgia Bright Program. Let's see. And one good thing, uh, here's, here's another slide of just, uh, twenty-five-year lease. Um, I won't get into the details on this slide, but one good thing about Georgia Bright is that it carried out a pilot program over the past year to get itself sort of get its program up to speed and ready to launch full scale. And, uh, Dunwood United Methodist Church participated in this program, this pilot program. And Anne Hicks, who's a member of our Sustainability Committee, uh, and a member of the church's Environmental Stewardship Committee is here. And she's going to go over some of the benefits that the church has seen so far.
Very briefly, because of time, obviously. Um, so as you know, because, uh, many of you were there, we had the ribbon cutting for our solar array, a hundred and fifty-two kilowatt system, um, very sizable system installed, um, in late May. Uh, we had excellent press coverage that day and several churches have already contacted us, uh, with interest about the same program. So we're super proud to be a sustainability model for the city. As I said that day, the ribbon cutting. Um, we're actually very thrilled, um, to be saving money on our power bills already. And those savings can be put right back into our missions and other programs at the church. Um, and I'm not going to read all the details about our system and, but you will see that, um, monthly net savings about eighteen hundred. And we are still crunching the numbers because we just got our first bill from Georgia Bright, which is also an L L C. That's actually the company we have a contract with. Um, so, um, they are really, um, it's been very smooth. Um, like Larry said, that we're basically a pilot, um, for that program. And we're also going to be going in, into it, um, more depth at the next, um, Sustainability Committee Greenspeak Program, which is August twentieth. There should be some c- communications soon about that. Um, so like you see on the slide, we had no upfront construction costs. Um, we had the Georgia Interface Power and Light Entity kind of help shepherd us through the process, um, to look at the proposals from the construction contractors, but, um, no upfront costs. Our solar company will, um, continue to maintain the system over the life of the project. So, um, I could come back and give you better data, but, um, I will say definitely that eighteen hundred dollar figure is is looking pretty accurate and we may even be above that, especially in the summer months when we're generating, uh, more solar. So, um, and I did want to mention that's significant, the amount of carbon dioxide we're preventing, um, going into the atmosphere with the system. It's, it's huge. I mean, if you want to make a big bang for your buck in terms of reducing your carbon footprint, solar is the way to go. Um, we estimated, like you see on this slide, seven, seventy-five tons a year in reductions of C O two, but it's looking much, much higher because, um, I actually have access to the app that shows real-time operating data for our solar system. It's super cool. And I can see how much we're generating every day. And then that also keeps track of the carbon that's, um, being prevented from entering the atmosphere. So it's really, um, it's really making a difference in this community and I hope the city will consider a similar project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. So just a quick recommendation. Our recommendation would be to, as you're discussing this, is to is to apply for this Georgia Bright Program. Um, I think it's a no regrets, uh, option. And as long as everything is okay on both sides with like the fine print to, to move forward with it. And the exact timing of the launch of the tranche for commercial entities is going to be a little bit delayed versus the, the homeowners, which starts like next week. And I've heard that like October is about the time that they're going to open it up to the, um, you know, commercial side, which would include the cities. Um, it's also possible that in parallel to this, you could put out a R F P for just a C P A from a, from a solar company or from several and see what you get. Um, I would imagine that the, the Georgia Bright Program is going to beat that, but I don't think it hurts to do that either. So, um, although I don't want to, you know, task, we don't ask the city to be tasking, you know, staff members to do more than they need to, but that's probably an option as well. And I think that's all. If there are any questions.
All right. Let's see if we have any questions. Uh, I'll try to do it so we can leave the presentation up. Uh, John, Tom, Stacy has a question.
So I'm going to ask the obvious one, um, since it's federally funded E P A money.
Right.
Is it still, is it still going to be there?
We've been asking Tim Shelton, who was available for questions, but he had to drop off.
Right. I'm still here. I'm still here.
Oh, Tim is still here. Okay. Tim, can you vouch for the security of the, the grant money?
Uh, yes, ma'am. So, you know, with the current climate, uh, we get this question quite often. Uh, but the, the funds were secured under the previous administration and so we have, um, secured those funds. So there's not any worry in regards to the funds going away. Uh, we did have to make some modificat- modifications in regards to the scope, scale of our program, um, due to the tax credits, uh, going away. Um, but again, the program is still going to do thirteen thousand installs for the state of Georgia.
That was helpful. Anybody else have questions?
I noticed I have questions and comments. Thank you for waiting this long for this. Thank you for doing this. I sure, worked with the Sustainability Committee and some other folks to kind of try to get this here. I think with Georgia Bright, it's a really nice time if we want to think about doing something with the city. A program where there's potentially no upfront costs and a savings to operating, uh, I think it's definitely worth, um, looking into and seeing if this is something we can do.
Yes. I think it's, go ahead, Catherine.
I think it sounds too good to be true, but I think it also sounds like there's a time crunch because of the money and because of the limited numbers of solar installations. I think I see Jay in the back. Jay, we had already sourced solar as a, um, Bible option for upstairs and, um, what discounted that? So.
For what? Did you, I'm sorry.
Solar.
But what did we source it for?
First.
Yes, they were looking at the purchase option, I think.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, it was sold. Yeah, but it was, um, yeah, we voted no. Um,
Right.
I, I think it's time sensitive and I, I'd love to do it.
So I, I think the next, what we need to define right now is the next steps because one of our challenges is, is it our roof? Because we not only constantly have people up there working on different systems, we now have a dr- a drone. I think launches from our roof. Is that correct? And so our situation is a little complex. Now we have a few other buildings.
I was going to point out.
And so the question become, so I think that I'm going to task Rob with having conversations about what our other options might be because like, uh, Catherine said, this is, I'm glad to hear the funds are still there. I was really pretty skeptical. Um, but if it's time sensitive, then we need to figure out what our options are. You know, I have friends that are mayors and they have them in fields, but you know, they, they're, they're powering parts of their town, but we can't do that. We don't have any fields.
In general, the cost of solar has come down, solar panels in general. So I would, I would play devil's advocate and argue it would be, um, cost-effective even if Georgia Bright, if the E P A grant money was not there.
Right. So.
Cause we looked at cherries, we, I'm sorry, we looked at another, we looked at two proposals
Right.
in the church and one did not have the Georgia Bright options.
Okay. Um.
They were competitive.
All right. So I think next is some internal conversations.
I do apologize, counsel. Um, I just wanted to see if I could speak and clarify a few things for you guys.
Okay. Just clarify his role. He's the Georgia Bright representative.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so.
Right.
As ambitious it is, as we hope to, to, to launch the, the program for commercial use as soon as October, uh, the actual, um, the actual timeframe that for when we would launch this or it'd be available to the city wouldn't be until January twenty-twenty-six.
We have plenty of time.
Um, and then it is a five-year program. Um, you know, again, assuming that we don't exhaust all of the funding year one, um, but it is a five-year program. Um, it is four arms to the program. Um, the first arm being the one they spoke to, which I bring up because it is relevant to you guys constituents as well as Dunwoody, um, which is our no-cost solar plan, which provides solar at no cost at all, no zero now, zero forever, um, to residents. That launches August fourth and then our, um, energy-saving lease model, uh, launches in September. And then our commercial would then launch in January. Um, it's also important to note that our commercial program for solar for all is slightly different than what the Methodist Church participated in in the sense that we build in, um, I've, I've been on the entire session, uh, so I do want to give you. in the sense that we build in, I've been on the entire session, so I do want to give you guys your, your flowers for, you know, being able to go through all of this data. Someone mentioned earlier in regards to community benefit agreements. So since we are offering this to not just nonprofits or houses of worship for solar for all, but also the municipal counties and for-profits, we do have a community benefits agreement built into this as well, where the portion for the first five years of the program that the city would get the solar panels or anyone gets solar panels does have an obligation to share a portion of their savings directly in, with the community. So again, we can set up a separate time where I can go over some of these details a little bit more in-depth with you guys for time's sake. But I did just want to make sure that those things were considered, you know, for you guys upfront deliberations.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions?
There are going to be some limitations on financing under Georgia law, and there may be some exceptions. We haven't looked at it, but I want to be careful about saying the city can commit to a twenty-five-year lease or.
We're not committing to anything tonight because we're not.
I think we're at least agreeing that we can move forward and look at how this might work.
Right.
And Joe's got it quick.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I was looking at next steps and takeaways as well. I, I, I'm seeking to have a analysis of all city-owned buildings or other opportunities. There might not be just roofs, right? There might be other opportunities. Is it, is it covered parking and so on? So legally, from a procurement perspective and an RFP perspective of having consultant or whatever, how, how should we structure this, Eric? If we want to take next steps from a analysis on the feasibility of city-owned properties, do we put an RFP out for procurement to say, here, we, we would like to have this analysis completed and conducted by the professional engineers and the subject managers in their field is along, and then they would present back to, through staff and come back to council? Just, you know, is, is that?
So, so, but given that it's ten fifteen and we still have other agenda items, I'm going to recommend that we put this as a discussion item, like the next steps at a future council meeting, because I don't think.
Respectfully, I've been asking, I've been trying to get this happen since I started on council in twenty twenty. And that's why we brought this up to a discussion item. I would, I would like to have, well, let's see what the other, everybody else thinks.
I think the challenge is, is you're asking questions that staff might not have the answer to, because it wasn't their presentation. Does that make sense? So I'm okay with pursuing, I'm okay with solar. I'm just not sure we can figure it all out tonight.
Can we ask Eric his views on what he thinks we should do next?
I'd be glad to set up a group internally to take a look at it with my staff. We have looked at some different options. There's very little land that the city owns, for one thing. This roof being the biggest one, but also has some challenges with the drone and some different things we've put on there. But at the same rate, we can certainly have staff look at that and come up with a recommendation for the council and bring something back to y'all.
All right. Thank you, Eric. And if we could do that in conjunction with the Sustainability Committee members.
If we could have some sustainability folks in those discussions, that would be, I think, important.
Yes, I think so too. I think let's set an ambitious goal of this middle of October, because September is already here. No, I'm not even thinking. We'll set a goal. One of the meetings in September, maybe? That might not be, that might, October is probably safer at this point. First meeting in October. This is a great presentation. Thank y'all. Do you have something, Larry?
One more thing. I think you mentioned that there's a time sensitivity to this, and while and a lot of that has to do with the, the tax code and changes to it, and if, if the city goes and gets solar, installs solar without the, aside from the Georgia Bright program, there's, the, the tax credits are expiring at the end of this year. There's some issues that come up that makes it, doesn't mean you can't do it. It's just.
I don't think we get tax credits.
There's like a direct pay option. There's also a third, even with a third-party, like a SEPA, what I was talking about before, that's not with Georgia Bright. That solar company takes the tax credit and gives you a lower rate price. So there is a time sensitivity to this that I think should be, you know, paid attention to.
Maybe, maybe September instead of October.
It's up to you. Lead it, steer it, work with staff. Right, work with staff and get it done. That's my instruction.
We will do that.
Right. That's my instruction. If there's a time limit. Thank y'all very much for staying. Thank you very much for the presentation. It was very interesting. Is, is Georgia Bright going to reach out to homeowners too?
Yes. So we've been doing outreach for the, for the entire state. I was going to say the, for our no-cost solar plan, it is based off of eighty percent AMI. And then for our second residential program is eighty percent AMI or disadvantaged census tract. So there's not too much of Dunwoody specifically that falls under disadvantaged census tract. There's a few areas near the Peachtree Industrial Boulevard, I believe. But mainly it's going to be based off of that area of medium income on the residential side for eligibility.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, Tim was participating in that program I mentioned, August twentieth at the Nature Center, the Greenspeed.
Right. Thank you. Just because I think people would like a backup battery. All right, Rachel.
Good evening. Y'all are so patient. Thank you. So yes, as Michael Sterling mentioned earlier, I'm here tonight to discuss adding permanent facade lighting here at City Hall. Again, as Michael mentioned, Holiday HQ aims to increase awareness of and expand on the already successful holiday efforts across the city. Holiday Lights at Brookrun, of course, and then our friends light up Dunwoody for the Dunwoody Home Association, Ashford Lane, create Dunwoody's Lane, Tumbridge and more. Permanent facade lighting at Dunwoody City Hall would further enhance these efforts, plus create additional opportunities to create a sense of community throughout the year. And this picture you see is just an example of what I'm speaking to. Again, Holiday HQ, we talked at this year's retreat. There's a little bit of our branding we've talked about. Essentially, Dunwoody is a perfect place to shop, stay, dine, and create holiday memories. Staff across multiple departments, we've been working with local nonprofits, property managers and the like to pull together that comprehensive holiday programming. So an example of these lights here at the Ford dealership are what we're looking at tonight. We did source pricing. We had very specific aesthetic look that we wanted. We didn't want the big, what do we call it, kind of gaudy Christmas lights. Instead, we see Hall, leave it very sleek and modern. Greenspeed worked with us and the, the pricing for three roof lines, so this would not be the back of City Hall, would be just over ninety-six thousand dollars. What that does give us is LED smart controller, which would allow leadership to control the brightness, color, display effects, including dimming and timing. Excuse me. Also includes a five-year manufacturer's warranty on the LED lights and a three-year warranty on the power supply. We've, we've spoken a little bit about Holiday HQ. This is something that we would like to start before December holidays. If approved, and again, it would, we would have the opportunity throughout the year to add different colors and festive offerings. And then the two funding options we've discussed are in front of you. One would be the unallocated capital for the Schallford Road proceeds, and the other would be the unassigned fund balance.
Mayor, if I may add a couple of things to Rachel's comments. This is something I had challenged staff to come up with, just to have something different, unique, that's a year-round project. And think of the King and Queen, how they changed the color on that building different times of the year. That's how we could do it. Here was some of the vision for this building to kind of show it off. You know, we had Dunwoody, we were very conservative with our city hall and how compared to some of the other cities and what they've spent on theirs. We wanted to kind of outline it and make it stand out a little bit more detail, but that's what we were looking at. On any given night, the lights would just be white or clear, and times of the year you could, we could change those colors based on whatever the parameters are set. Anyway, I just wanted to interject that. We do have the folks from Greenspeed along with CPS here to explain further if you would like.
Okay, questions, comments? Discussion. I, I hate to ask you to take the presentation down, but can you take it down so I can see? I see. Thank you, John. Go ahead.
Rachel, what lighting do we currently have on City Hall? Aren't there floodlights of some sort? What, what lighting is currently on City Hall?
We do. We have almost what's like a security light, if you will, with the flagpole and then the, with the floodlights.
So there, so it's a flagpole.
John, can you speak up just a tiny bit more, please?
These would be across the roof line.
Right. And I think I can answer John's question, Mayor, if that's okay, which is, John, what we have, we have, when we built the building or renovated the building, we put LED lights in the parking lot that are through Georgia Power. We also have the flagpole light, which is one of those lights, as a matter of fact. But also in the corners of the building and around the front of the building were built-in lights that are in those areas. So at the front of the city hall, then there's four floodlights that shine straight down and also in the two corners of the building. But that's all that we have, with the exception of the rear of the building has security lights for the PD. So the lighting is really security lighting. There's no floodlights on the building. I mean, again, we don't have a picture of it, but there's no lights flooding onto the building. There's nothing lighting the building up per se. It's really lighting coming off, lighting the, the adjacent areas of the building.
Correct.
I'd like to see what it currently looks like. I'm, I'm just not sure it's worth the money. I'm not sure the juice is worth the squeeze. It's a lot of money.
All right, go ahead. Is it going to look gaudy?
It sounds like it's going to look gaudy.
You're going to have every kind of color. It's really going to like, like a little snowflake house. Our building. The picture of the Ford dealership kind of looks gaudy.
Right.
So I appreciate the effort and the vision with this. If, to me, the Ford, the picture of the Ford dealership looks a little gaudy. But also, do you, I don't know if anybody remembers the pandemic, like a million years ago, but when we did something for the kids at graduation and we decorated out front. Does anybody remember that besides me? John kind of remembers it, but we just put out cute decorations and kids could, families and kids could come take pictures. Kathy, do you remember? And I'm not saying no to, like, for me, this isn't necessarily no forever, but maybe we start smaller. Like we decorate with light jubilade, Ace Hardware or something. I mean, I don't know. It's a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, but as much as the money worries, bothers me because I don't like to spend money. It's the, I'm not a hundred percent sure this is the look. It doesn't actually scream holiday to me either. Right. I mean, it's, but it's all year, but I don't know that we need it all year. I mean, we don't, I get that we're not spending three hundred million or seventy million on our city hall. I think there's some intention in that. Also, we don't have it to spend, but I'm not sure that we need, the King and Queen building you can see. And, and I'd rather have it feel more homey or, you know, the holidays, like a, like we did for this graduation thing, which, you know, put up some of those snowflakes on the poles, you know, and the reindeer. My neighbor has a, like illuminated reindeer. I don't know. But this feels, I'm not a hundred percent, I think it would maybe be gaudy.
Maybe uplighting in the sense of
Yeah.
four or five uplighting cans to light the building up. If those were LED, easier to install ground-based going up.
And I think they come in colors. Don't they come in colors, John?
Yeah. And you can change, I mean, on those as well, yes.
Right. John, I mean, Tom, whoever you are at this point, Joe, sorry.
And I think you read some of my notes, but I'm, I'm going to be a no on this. I'm, I'm for crawl, walk, run. I wrote this before you said this. Start with holiday decorations like they already do in city halls of nearby Shambly, Norcross, Sandy Springs, Roswell, Alpharetta, and many more. Because right now we don't do anything. So let's go get some garland and put up some things. City, and by the way, the sighting of it, I talked to other people. We're not on a town square. We're not centrally located. We're set back to the road. There's no green space. We're not, we, we're not able to see around the town like the Eiffel Tower, Empress State Building, King and Queen. Or it's in front of a green space, right? So, yeah. And the cars are driving by at fifty-four miles an hour, so they're barely able to see it. So, yeah.
Mayor, we got your, we can certainly make those, I want to hear from the council, but I, but a hundred percent.
Does anybody else?
One more question, if I could. If we weren't a governmental agency in a governmental building, would this be legal in any other business? Is this, is, does our own code talk about the lighting to this aspect? Are we violating our own code if we weren't a city government?
I think nobody's left from community. I can't see. Community development's not here anymore, but we could ask. Point, but I don't even think it matters because I think it would, it's not, I don't think there's very much, like year-round, like anyway, I think I've made my point. Does anybody disagree? All right. I think we will go, suggest you go a different direction. Thank you for the efforts, though, and thank you for the people that stayed from the company. We're really sorry.
Thank you.
It was an ambitious agenda tonight. Thank you. All right, Richard, the hardest part.
All right. Good evening. This will be a very brief presentation for the twenty twenty-five mid-year budget amendment. Purpose, I think we all kind of know what the purpose is. We're responding to changes that have been made throughout the city, throughout the year so far with this budget amendment, basically. To give you a feel for kind of how we got here, we, we prepared the twenty twenty-five revenue and expense budgets basically during the summer of twenty twenty-four. Generally speaking, we had five, six, if we were fortunate, seven months, seven months of actuals last year when we have to have that budget published and then adopted. So we don't get a full year until the audits ultimately completed, and we get the tax digest in May roughly from the county as well to determine property tax revenue for twenty twenty-five. To summarize what we're doing tonight, the general, within the general fund, we are going to increase revenue sources to twenty twenty-four levels. And I walked through a couple of them that we're going to do that. That'll eliminate the use of fund balance within the general fund, the one point two six million dollars. The expense budget within the general fund will remain unchanged. And then there's also a couple of adjustments within SPOS two and the General Capital Projects Fund with no overall changes to the bottom line for those funds as well. Within the general fund, revenue that's changing, three hundred and six thousand dollars per real property taxed. Again, that's based on the digests we received. Three hundred and sixty-five thousand in franchise fees. As we spoke earlier, we don't get that until February, and it came in much higher this year. I say this year, the one we received in February for twenty twenty-four came in much higher, so we're going to increase that as well to align with twenty twenty-four. And then same with business and occupation taxes as well. That is coming stronger, and we're going to add two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that line item. There's a couple of others that were detailed in the memo and the resolution that combined added up to about three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So those are the total one point two six million dollars in revenue adjustments we are going to make as part of this. On the general fund expense side, again, no change to the bottom line, but we are going to do a couple of changes within the police department. We're going to use the savings from vacancies within their personnel costs to fund the six-month trial period with Flock for the drone of a hundred thousand dollars to purchase the ten body-worn Axon, Axon body-worn cameras and seventy thousand for the shared, shared police SWAT vehicle as well. But again, no bottom line changes. That's all within the police budget within the general fund. Real quickly, on the capital side, in SPOS two, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty out of the Georgetown Terrell project into the Cherry, Edson Cherry Hill Connector Path Project. The majority of that is funded with a grant, and this is a funding needed to complete the project, basically. One transfer of twenty-seven thousand dollars within the IT department to complete the hybrid build-out of all the conference rooms. Total transfer of about one point five million dollars into the Brookrun Maintenance Building, and then four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for the Veterans Memorial of Brookrun. And I believe that is it. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Stacy, with your hand up? No. She's probably coughing, right? John, I see your hand.
Thank you, Richard.
You got to talk louder, sorry.
When we approved the Brookrun Maintenance Facility, we had a line item in there for for funds coming from the, hold on. The four hundred and sixty-one thousand, you said during that.
The four hundred and sixty one thousand, you said during that budget item or during that approval, it was just unallocated capital. Now I'm finding out that it's unallocated capital, that four hundred and sixty one is going to come from the Schallford um funds. Is there any other place where we could get that? Those Schallford funds, honestly, as far as I was concerned, was really reserved for park. You know, development, front of house, park development. The, what's already been done is approved, yes, but now this four hundred and sixty one, is there any other place we can get that from?
At this moment, we don't have any other available sources. Uh, all of the uh remaining fund balance within the uh General Capital Projects Fund has been spoken for, so to speak. It's been programmed into the budget. Um, those are the unallocated capital funds that we have within the, that fund um related to the Schallford proceeds.
But we could take it from the general reserves, right? I thought we had choices.
If you wanted.
Can you remind me what the choices were when we approved this project?
Uh, those were the two main ones, either general fund reserve or the Schallford Road proceeds, yes.
Right. So we, we do have that choice.
A front of house park improvements, and now we're using it for the maintenance facility. I would, I mean, I know it's shuffling money and it really, to an extent, it's symbol, symbolic. But I would rather have the Schallford funds going towards a park somewhere else so that we can. Again, to me, it's symbolic, but it's just the way that I thought those funds were intended and we should be using them as intended instead of back of house, but that's just my one opinion.
What did we say? How did we say we were paying for the Veterans Memorial with what funds?
Same thing, the Schallford.
Oh, the Schallford funds, okay, okay.
And Mayor, on those funds, it's really just a personal preference, the way y'all want to go.
It doesn't matter.
It all becomes, I mean, I hear what, what uh Councilman Hendrick is saying, and it's all the same at the end of the day. And I think what would be good, and that's why we want y'all to focus on the capital funds and how you allocate those, because we see it in staff. And I think the auditor sees it the same way as just, as unallocated funds that we can use for that. But it just depends if you want to set aside a certain amount or a front of the house type project, we can certainly do that as well.
Right. So what, when this comes before us for action, John, do you want a recommendation for other sources of that fund?
I would prefer other resources, yes. And it's in our budget times, we would try to wipe out the unallocated Schallford funds for other projects, being parks.
It's fine. It's six, it was always six of one and a half dozen of another. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, wait, wait, wait. So, right, other discussion.
So Richard, I just wanted to talk about the process. I'm a process guy. So when is this now? Let me just re, re, read and then I'll let you convert, I mean, respond. When is this necessary, if at all, and why? Is it best practice to amend the budget retroactively after expenses have been obligated? So notice when we had that conversation with the Brook One Maintenance Facility as an action. I, I oppose that because I want to have a conversation about unmet capital needs, but I also wanted to amend the budget first and then vote on and fund a respective disbursement. So I'm, I'm kind of looking at, there's certain things that have, have a time, time deadline, and I get that, but. So can you just kind of respond to this, how the process works and retroactively and proactively versus?
Sure. Ideally, when the um, uh and a, a need or project is identified, uh, when a contract award is done at the time that you award that contract, maybe with an agenda item, for example, is also a time to process a budget amendment. So you know where the funds are coming from and it's a, it's a, I'll record it at the same time, basically. So that's a process that I'm familiar with at other municipalities, yes. So that's one way to certainly a, a, address it at the same time.
So is, is that something, would that be too, a, a more of a burden for you to do a budget amendment at the same time that we adjust this? Or do you prefer just doing it bulk and match as you go?
Either way is fine. I mean, yes, it, it, uh, adjusting it at the time of the contract award certainly does make sense. It would require a little bit more internal process to, to get everything aligned, but uh, um, yes, we could certainly explore that.
There, there's no right or wrong way to do it. A lot of time, a lot of jurisdictions will do an amendment when you do the contract as well. And we can certainly start doing those that way. It's a little bit more upfront, but it also doesn't add any mystery to it or time delays to that or time. So we can certainly do that. It's a different shift from the way finance was set up here many, many years ago. So we can certainly do that, though. Richard has, does not have a preference to that.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Uh, I have questions. So about seven million hours ago, um, there was a public comment about fund balance differences on papers, and I know sometimes there's some confusion. But do you remember what was said? I didn't write it down, but.
Um, sure. So within our financial statements, uh, if, I want to try to say this, but not to technical accounting terms, but there's the general fund within our financial statements. Uh, that general fund line item actually consists of the general fund actuals as well as our cares two proceeds and our ARPA two proceeds. Those all three roll up within that one column on the general fund. So I've, I don't have it with me at the moment, but I have spreadsheet that divvies out those three, so to speak. So uh, we're obviously spending down cares two, we're spending down ARPA, but we uh had, we, good news within the general fund. Um, so the net effect of all of those was the two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, I believe that was referred to. But that's because, again, we did spin down in two of the funds, but we added three and a half million dollars in the general fund. So a, a, again, it's the net effect of those three funds. It'd be much easier to see on a sheet of paper, I know, so.
Maybe when we have this, you'll show it to us on a slide or something, or maybe when it's not, almost eleven o'clock, I could understand it, but, okay. Um, go ahead. All right. Uh, so we will see this again, not on consent, because we'll look at the building maintenance, building, whatever that's called. All right. This, anybody have anything else? I think probably not. I think that's the end of the agenda. Public comments. Actually, I have some public left. Um, city manager comments.
Uh, Mayor, we do not need an executive session. I do want to thank everybody for their time tonight. I know it was a long meeting. It means a lot for staff to have uh, have y'all commit to this type of meeting. We got through a lot tonight and we did have a great public participation tonight, so it was exciting from that standpoint, but thank you.
Counsel comments. Catherine.
I would like to applaud and congratulate the citizens that stayed through the whole meeting. Thank you very, very much.
Yep. But John.
Uh, Eric, I uh saw the flock and it wanted me, I wanted to remind myself that we need an evaluation of the flock uh drone on the roof. And I'm really interested to knowing the success and more importantly, the need of it possibly on the east side of town. Right now, we have one flock camera that's only hitting about half the town. I would like to find us, if it's a good um solution, if it's workable, if it's financially feasible, I would like prior to budget, having a report back and possible solution to have a second flock on the east coast, east side of Dunwoody to handle uh any police calls in the Peachtree Industrial up to, you know, what is the whole area? If that, it could be feasible, if there could be an evaluation, if successful, I'd like to have that because the conversation is part of our budget strategy moving forward.
We can do that.
Thank you. Um, first day of school is a week from today is, I know, it was so right. And uh drive carefully. There'll be children where you don't expect them. There'll be lots of traffic, especially the first few weeks. Find a different way, find a different time or pack your patience or all three. And be careful. All right. Uh, I see nobody else.
To adjourn.
Moved by Joe.
Second.
Second by Rob. All in favor, say aye. Me opposed. Thank you.